Well, good evening and welcome to October 29th. This is the 3,800th day of the year 2020.
3,800?
It's been that long, man.
It's been a long day.
Well, we welcome you and it's glad to see smiling eyes at least from here up. And we're honored that you would join us here today in the County Commission meeting. It's good to have everyone. Hope this is a profitable time for you. It's the tradition of this board and the boards all across the country. We begin with a couple of things. We're going to have a pledge of allegiance. Before we do that, we're going to have something called a solemnizing prayer. It's not for you, it's for the commissioners. What we do, we take very seriously and we seek wisdom from a lot of places. And so we'll have our chaplain, Chaplain Taylor, come forward and lead us commissioners. If you'll join things, we'll get started.
I want to be vouched for this privilege to be here tonight. We thank for our county commissioner, Lord, and the work and dedication they have for Wayne County. I pray while we give them the wisdom they need tonight to make the right decision. Pray you bless them and bless their families, Lord. Allison Ritz tonight in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I close with a special recognition to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the individual with liberty and justice for all.
Next chaplain, my way, good to see you. And Bud Junior's here with us. He's called up.
Yes, sir.
All right, we've got some additions to make and one deletion. Commissioners, you received an email from Carolyn. Well, it's actually from Aaron, it was ordered from Carolyn. So item number one, there is authorized young life to use in parking lot. It applies on Thursday, October 29th, 2020. And that will be added as an item X on the consent agenda. The second item is authorize First Baptist Church to use the parking lot at Westin Plaza, December 11th, 12th, and 13th, 2020, at no charge, perform their annual Christmas event. Remember they have the living Christmas tree, but keep you though in doors this year. And then that'll be on Y on consent. Item Z on consent, entered temporary lease for First Baptist bringing in B6 in the Westin Plaza on 11th, 12th, 13th, December, for $14 a square foot. So you see the numbers that are set through there. That'll be item Z. And then we'll add a fourth item, authorize Faithful Friends Animal Sanctuary to place a structure at the Westin Plaza. Let's reflect it blue again, Mike has talked to us about that. That'll be item AA, double A. I do have on the regular agenda, we'll delete item number seven. We'll have that on a subsequent, a subsequent meeting. And that's all I have. Does anyone else have anything to add or remove from the agenda? All right, if not, we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I move.
All right, Craig, motion Jim second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. And then let's see, the minutes of our last meeting, October 5th, were provided for us. We have a motion to approve the minutes of October 5th. So move. Jim, Jim, Mike second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, then amended consent agenda is before us. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
Thank you, Craig. Jim second, all in favor say aye. Then we will move item number two, which is special recognition.
Well, community mayor, this is a part of appreciation month. And just so that ACL use, I don't know if you don't have the version, but we do have chaplains. It's too fortunate to be here, that's why. And we're lucky to have two chaplains, father and son, Chaplain Michael Taylor and Chaplain Michael Taylor. So we've been very fortunate. They've been very steadfast, faithful to us over the last, I guess since 2013 maybe. Those that didn't remember the whole saga over the years, we used to do our own prayers and then there was a lawsuit. And fortunately, they were able to step up for us when we really needed them and providing our prayers for us before the beginning of each year. And so we thought this would be a good time to thank them and provide them a little token for the county here. We've got a couple of plaques. And so we're just very thankful for both of you, what you do for us. You know, my father was a priest, sort of part-time now pastor. I know the hours that you guys put in, that we don't even know about, helping people. And you know, thing about it is pastors have problems too, like Christ does, but we all seem to know the problem, the chaplain and preacher. So thank you and appreciate you greatly. Appreciate you and your good words.
Yeah, I want to echo Mike's comments. We, we've had conversations over the years and you know how much we appreciate you guys. You come in every couple of weeks and you preside over our prayers, but we know that in between, you're also praying for this community and you're praying for commissioners. This job takes a lot of hours and we know that. And I remember when I was considering for commission, I'd come to the meetings and listen to all the deliberations up here. I thought, how in the world could I concede of all the issues that have to be done? And that's when you really begin to seek wisdom, to do things that are in the best interest of everybody in the community. That's one thing that we hear you pray for us every week is for wisdom. And that's the most important gift that I think we could be given because none of us, either individually or as a group, has the knowledge to do this job. That, that's a certainty, we just don't. And so wisdom is a precious gift and it's something that you pray for us on an ongoing basis. And we know that and we feel that. And that's the reason why we have you here. There's no other reason than you go out and ask for wisdom. So thank you for your dedication. You do a small part, what you do for us is a small part of your overall job. It's a big job and it takes you all over the state. And so we appreciate you representing us, representing you.
Yeah, I just like the end of those standing sentiments. They have been so dedicated. We're into about our sixth year and I can't remember a meeting when one of the two of them were here. And it means a great deal to us that you fell as first of us. You know that, we took that, we tried to take it to the Supreme Court to show how powerful prayer is and how what we've done. So thank you for what you do for us. And it's just great that we can take a little bit of time here to see, tell you that.
Do your credit, anything for y'all?
Yeah, I'd just like to say Reverend Taylor, you know, you do have a terrific program with Shield the Badge and that doesn't get talked about enough. And I know you work very hard on that. And you know, I think you need to be recognized for the dedication you put forth to that too. And of course, Mike and I have been commissioners the longest and we've had that relationship with you ever since day one. And we really appreciate your guidance and we really appreciate you looking out for the commissioners because believe me, we need all the help we can get. And sometimes even prayer is not enough. But I want to thank you for all that you do for the citizens of Rowan County and especially for us county commissioners.
Well, Michael and Michael, from one pastor to another, I just want to say thank you because whoever said that we don't know how much work goes on behind the scenes for pastors is very, very correct. So thank you so much and I hope we can continue our relationship.
You know, every two weeks, well, as we talked about, praying for us, when we were doing Zoom, we'd be praying for you that you could be able to get that computer turned on. That'll serve you. So Mike, I'm going to get a picture. We got your little, little bag here.
Good chaplain H. Michael Taylor, in honor of clergy appreciation month, in recognition and gratitude of his commitment to providing the indication for the Rowan County Board of Commissioners, commissioners, meetings, and appreciation for his dedication as a chaplain of the Rowan County Sheriff's Department, Rowan County Board of Commissioners, this the 19th day, October 20th.
We take our masks off for this. Do we get a statement? Thank you for the privilege of what we do. I see what you go through now by having to be here all these meetings and extra meetings and so forth. It's been a privilege to be able to do this and a privilege to be able to have my sons be able to help me when we had to find somebody in case I wouldn't be here. I recommend my own son, he can do any better than that. But I do appreciate it, Reverend. I've learned a lot since I've been doing this and got to be lapping. And I do pray for you every day, not just at these meetings, but every day I call your name out, everybody who's part of this county here. And I enjoy what I do and appreciate the privilege to be here doing this. Thank you so much. Thanks.
And I appreciate the privilege to do it when he's not here and me calling him Chaplain Junior so you know the difference. But like him, I love prayer, I love praying for you guys. And I appreciate you letting us come up here and do that. Anything ever happens to him, I got big shoes to fill, I know that already, so I appreciate you guys.
Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Excuse us, thank you again, for being present, you're part of Wayne County. All right, moving on, item number three, do we have anyone signed up to comment on that question? Okay, move on. Item number four, courtesy hearing for temporary use, year 1-20 for Reapers.
Good evening. Can the commissioners at home see the screen? It's the presentation.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This is the Reapers Round Courtesy Hearing for Temporary Use Request Submitted by TJ and Angie Jenkins. And we need the staff to review the request. The site is situated in South Rowan. You can see it there in the yellow parcel. It's Feast of 85, situated between Old Lynn Road and Darty Road. Just some general information, the tax parcel, 137-001, consists of 10 acres. It has access via Shepherd Woods Road and it is on rural agricultural. Use doesn't qualify for special requirement in the RA District because it doesn't have the adequate state road frontage to qualify. And so in some limited sense, there are opportunities the commission can consider temporary use requests. And that's what we have with these, where we have a haunted house and trail for two-year period. So let's do a little background. In 2017, the commission approved a request from Angie Jenkins in September of that year. You see here, it's kind of small, but it's an area limits from 2017. But the permit conditions were for Fridays and Saturdays from roughly six weeks before Halloween in 2017 and six weeks before, you know, until Halloween in 2018. Only for Fridays and Saturdays in the time period of 7:00 p.m. until midnight. The other conditions were get approval from DOT. DOT stated that there was adequate site distance via Shepherd Woods Road. Since the site didn't have direct access to a frontage, they didn't issue a permit, told staff not to not require. There was also a building that was built, which is the haunted house. They got building inspections and approved by the fire marshal for a sprinkling system. That was one of the conditions. Also, the requirement was that there be no event parking with Shepherd Woods Road. Also, we required that additional party that joined the property of Shepherd Woods Road be added to the liability insurance requirement. So that was a privilege request in 2017. This particular request is for Fridays and Saturdays. You'll notice that some of these events have already occurred, but it's for a similar six-week period. It's also for two years. We do have Friday and Saturday, 7:00 p.m. until midnight. And then Sunday from 5:00 until 9:00 p.m. I think 7:00 p.m. until midnight should actually be 5:00 p.m., is that correct? I have a type of record there. Also, Mr. Jenkins has received approval from the fire marshal for the haunted house and the trail. He's also gotten approval from the environmental health for incursion sales. And I think the water system is also tested and he has provided staff a copy of the liability insurance. We did have a couple of concerns when we met with Mr. Jenkins at the end of September, following this, we had their, this property. We noticed via aerial photographs, and this is a 2019 aerial imagery, that there were three buildings. They look sort of old, but I think they're, they're designed to appear that way for his event. But we noticed that they had been built. Records indicated we had been permits pulled. We encouraged him to talk with our inspections office and he said that he would have his engineer meet with him to discuss bringing in the situation. In talking with our inspections folks, I don't think that has happened yet. There's some other concerns that I think the board has probably received them either by phone call or email. Noise from the event seems to be an ongoing concern from the general property owners, as well as traffic management along Darty Road. I think I handed out an email to you from Austin Heights Fire Department that they've got a real concern about access to the site, especially in the event. Parking does happen along Shepherd Woods Road. And I think the standard, if you will, that the road exists is somewhat a concern for emergency vehicles. One of the others is that the hours of operation seem to go sometimes beyond that. And those are based on emails that we get as staff. So the zoning ordinance, again, has the opportunity to approve temporary uses. The guidance, if you will, is that any conditions you attach to it needs to be reasonable and appropriate. And approval should be in accordance with these particular items here. The applicant has provided a response to these, an area of the packet. The first is the useful on the danger of public health, safety, or general welfare. It will not have a substantial negative impact on the general properties. And if you move this, use will not be approved for a period of 16 years. Any questions so far? All right. So during some, some study of the county code, discovered chapter 12 of the Rowan County Code of Orders, which is the mask advocate. It was adopted in 1975. It applies when there are more than 1,000 people in attendance for more than a six continuous hour period. Now, we don't have any way of really knowing how many people have attended Reapers Round on any given night or any other event that's similar. But I think it was interesting, the intent of this ordinance was designed to protect the public health, welfare, and safety, not only those who attend, but also those who live nearby. And so the county attorney and I talked a little bit about this. Because it doesn't really apply if there's no more than 1,000 people. But in the absence of some real conditions that could be attached to this permit, again, appropriate and reasonable conditions, these may be something that you want to consider or hadn't, hadn't thought of in the past. And so the standards that are in this ordinance from 1975 address many things. First is bonding and liability insurance. A bond may be required to ensure compliance with the conditions of the permit. So if the applicant doesn't fulfill something that they stated to this board or to staff that they would do, you can invoke the bond. Liability insurance, up to $1 million for incidents as well as property damage. Mr. Jenkins does have and has provided staff a copy of that. Separation distance, the ordinance says that no activity is to occur within 1,500 feet of any residence unless the owner or occupant provides a written, a written waiver. 1,500 feet. A command post is to be provided by the applicant if convenient mobile or building available to help law enforcement or other government agencies. Ingress and egress. The applicant is to provide personnel and arrangements necessary to keep entrances and exits to the public roads open to traffic at all times and make arrangements with private parties and incident duty to ensure this happens. Parking is to be provided at one space per four people. Fire prevention and control, as well as dust control. Needs a written plan for dust control and fire prevention. Emergency plan needs to be a written plan that specifically recognizes how incidents require rapid evacuation, as well as including use of emergency access roads. Adequate medical care, a physician is required to be on premises. Needs to be a structure on site, even providing notice to hospitals within 20 miles of the event, as well as a manual service and then, then provide a written response if they are aware of the facility and provide a response. Plans for attendance, plan for limiting attendance, I'm sorry, skip that one. It's a written plan for limiting attendance, preventing non-ticket holders, and a written plan for security enforcement, including interim and external crowd control, and a written response from the sheriff as to its adequacy. Provisions for toilet facilities that want for 100 attendees, garbage collection, solid waste collection on-site, as well as post-gathering cleanup. And we always levels after perimeter, no more than seven addresses. Those are the things that are included in the ordinance that was adopted in 1975. Some of them seem a little much of this type of facility, but I think there's some that probably could be used for this in future applications. Again, this is a courtesy hearing, it's not a conditional use permit, there's no sworn testimony. People are going to tell you either in person, via Zoom, or maybe even by phone what your feelings are. Mr. Jenkins is here, I will say from a staff perspective, he's been very receptive to work with. So I'm expecting to be some forthcoming who's responding or answering questions. So I'm going to allow the applicant to come forward in just a moment. We do have some drawn footage that has been put together that I think he can kind of navigate you through the site. So if you've got any questions, you can ask him. But before we get to that point, any questions?
Yeah, I was out there, the food, rather, I would have been safe to leave it, it contains very much traffic. And if we're working on estimating 1,000 people to be there at one time, how do we go about trying to determine how much space it's going to take? That's 250 parking spaces. And do we have a set size of parking space?
We do. That would be shown on the site plan. Would be to scale, would show the spaces, I think they're supposed to be nine feet by eleven. Looking for shame, but I think that's correct. Space is nine feet by eleven feet.
If you say anything, you have to be able to park, certainly the county can't be parked on that drive.
So the commissioner, I'm sure that didn't answer your question. Based on the applicant's site plan, how would I have moved the scale as a minimum? Keep with the X number.
Well, honestly, I could not see parking area number two when I was there. And I went in unannounced, so I didn't want to drive around close to his house creating turmoil there, I just said, I bought two, you know, about. All right, maybe that's something that he can best pencil and give to them.
Can we ask questions of Mr. Jenkins now?
Yeah, Judy, hold on one second, is there a way for them to get what we were just saying? Did y'all?
We just got, we can email.
This is Judy and Greg. Yeah, Judy and Greg. So we just received a state from John Stepper from the sheriff's office just about his mind. So we're going to, we're going to take a couple of minutes here. All right, Judy and Greg, Jay just emailed to you guys. So we're going to, we're going to take a lot of recess, but we're going
This is courtesy hearing, we will just follow the rules for hearing the three members.
Yep. So Phil just gives the
I haven't received the email yet. Oh, okay, just got it, thanks.
Craig and Judy, just let me know when you're ready.
I'm through reading, but it threw me off the Zoom meeting, let me dial back in.
Okay.
Okay, I'm back.
Yeah. Judy, can we get that ready?
Just a minute.
Um, you're getting
This.
This.
Okay.
All right, good. All right, Mr. Jenkins? Yeah, come on up and everybody like to discuss?
If I seem defensive or
Yeah, let me say this before we get started, we're going to give everyone an opportunity to speak. One thing that we're really particular about is that I know these kinds of crazy times, but we're going to treat each other with respect, we're going to be nice. You're going to be nice, and folks who come up, you're going to be nice as well. Because it doesn't do any good in the end, we're all one county folks. You know, expect people to be kind, and we're going to hold you to that standard.
As I was saying, if I seem defensive on anything anyone asks, it's not personal. This is the way I'm doing my livelihood, I feel like I've been attacked, not by the county, but by outsiders from Charlotte, is what started this whole mess. I felt like we were attacked. I have been in business for 10 years, I know this is probably in the packet. We've never had calls to our property in 10 years, never had emergency calls, never had police calls, never had any issues. Opening night was something I've never seen in my life. Using on opening night, we have 200 to 300 people. I have multiple years of records of that. On the end of September, people just don't come out. I don't know if it was COVID or if it was what it was, but opening night, I've never seen anything like it. I've never seen cars like that. We started turning cars away. It seemed like, it seemed like it was about 8 o'clock or 8:30 that night. We had nowhere for a park, we told them we were full. But at that time, I did not have the security measures that I do now. So people were parking on the sides of the road, parking streets, parking anywhere they could and walking in. We had security there, but there was no way to see who was walking in, who wasn't walking in. So as soon as the whole incident happened, the next day, we sat down with all of our, my friends who helped me. I have a lot of volunteers who come out, I have over 90 volunteers to help us nightly. We got together, sat down, and tried to come up with a plan that would stop any of this forever happening again. My eight-year-old son is standing on the front porch. He's an actor at our haunted house, he's a clown that runs around, has always been there. So it isn't getting any more personal or at hit home than it did that night to me. But then again, this is my livelihood, I feel like I was attacked by whatever it was. The Corona bringing it on, whatever it was, but we felt like we were attacked. All of my volunteers felt that, that we were attacked by something. We drastically changed the way we do things and have had actually good results and good comments about the way we're doing our new ticket sales and the way we're doing our COVID control, people staying in their cars. It's that, I don't know if you want me to elaborate on what we're doing on security and how it goes, or I don't know if that's in your packet or not, if it's self-explanatory of how people enter and where they, I know he had questions with the map. I'm not sure if it all makes sense. As they come up the driveway, the driveway is on the right inside behind the red building. As they come up the driveway, there's a road behind, to the right. There's a road behind the red building, that is my shop. There's a road that goes behind that, leads you out into the park lot. The area that you see where the ambulance is, where the poles are right in front of the ambulance, the security team is right there, that whole area is fenced in. It's a completely fenced-in area, secure area. When you come by to the corner of the red building off of my driveway, you're given a piece of paper that has a radio station on it. Here has instructions of what we want you to do. And my parking ladies also tell you what to do. You do the radio station, and that's how you're called up to come to the security gate, which is a way we were able to control the COVID, control people in their cars. They get a piece of paper like this, has a radio station, so stay in your car, and everybody gets their car. So, and it's actually worked very well. We have five armed security every night there, we have five sheriffs on duty when they can provide. We have had an issue, we've had five almost every night, we had one night, we had four since the incident. I've asked Sheriff Alton to, okay, China Grove to help us, Faith, Landis. We have not been able to receive that from Sheriff Alton to, to reach out to other agencies to help us. We have five armed security that are ex-military, that I know personally, that are retired military that are there. We want you to come through the purple tent right there, when you are actually are called over the intercom, you come to that purple tent. I have two men there warning people, you stand in the secure area in front of the haunted house, and you're not allowed to go back out to the parking lot to your car or anything without coming back through security again. So I have two security guards and a sheriff's station in each parking lot. It's patrolling the parking lots to make sure people stay in their cars for the COVID and also to keep crowd control under control. Once we park you, you stay in your car, if you want to get out and smoke a cigarette, I don't, I don't stop people in the back. But on an average, on a cold night like it's been, people have been staying in their cars. We'll have a handful that gets out. Most people stay in their car, and they like it because they can stay warm until it's time to go in. They're called to the ticket, our ticket booth is on the left-hand side, they're called into the waiting area. They go to the ticket booth, buy your, buy their ticket, they're called by a number that's on their ticket into the front of the haunted house. So we have a small gathering in front of the haunted house of about 20 to 30. We've had as much as, I know that the rules are seven, I think it's 75 now, but we've had as much as 40, and they're trying to keep the numbers really low. We have two sheriffs that stand in that area also. So 40 people to two sheriffs is the ratio the sheriffs said they were comfortable with. So we're still trying to give the people a feel where they're standing and waiting to be called in to go inside. We fill up parking lot one, which is where my truck's at, the white dogs, I fill up parking lot one. Fill up parking lot two, and then parking lot three is also property. It wasn't listed on the first drawing that I own. We actually own the eight and a half acres beside of us, plus the 10 acres we own, or almost 11 acres that we own. So we own close to 20 acres total. We own, we do not own the right-of-way, but we have the right-of-way feeds, all the property back there. The right-of-way, I own every piece of property that the right-of-way feeds. So I don't have any conflict with any of the neighbors. I know he was listed on the very first, the very first application, the neighbor wasn't. But I own the property now, that's a joint house. So parking lot three is actually over there, it's a big grass field. We can park, someone had asked me earlier about parking, we can park around 300 cars. Saturday night at 8:30, I had 300 cars, I was full, we put us sold outside at the road. I had a sheriff standing down there in direct traffic all night. We have not had an issue with traffic sitting in dirty roads since the night one. Night one, we did, we were totally caught off guard, had never seen that happen before. Night one, I also had 600 drop-offs. 90% of my crowd, which was all over the news, were under the age of 16. There are no drop-offs allowed now. You have to have a photo ID to come in my drive. When you come in, your ID is checked. We check IDs, someone in the car has to be 18 to get through the gate. We do allow 16-year-olds, if it's a couple or three people, if all three are 16 and have an ID. I've turned away average of 10 to 15 cars because someone in the car does not have an ID. If I have an ID, at least I know who they are, where they're from. I have a lady, two ladies actually used to be bartenders that check IDs all night long. So we have also on top of security, two ladies checking IDs, plus a lady giving car tickets out. That's actually how you get on my property. But we put a sheriff in the road when we were sold out, he told them we were sold out for tonight, they could come back and try us next week. We've only sold out one time since the beginning, and that was this past Saturday. We, I had some concerns from, this seems like our traffic has always come to my driveway from the left-hand side, from the Carson School side, from the original China Grove exit. Now my traffic's coming from the New Baby Five, the new China Grove exit, coming up dirty road, past Four Year Sausage. They're coming up and turning in. So now we're getting traffic going the opposite way, when we tell them to continue on, they go up, turn around, look for a place to turn around, and go back to 85. So we have seen an issue with that. I've talked with a local DOT man yesterday about a way to get a state sign that points 85. Continue on, because you can go to 85 if you stay on the right road, it'll take you back around this road to the New Baby Five exit again. It's just a big circle. But he said that would be an act of Congress to get the state to put a sign for an 85, 85 sign. Security is a big issue for us. I mean, I, my, my sons, well, I have four sons. Two of my sons are 11 and eight, and they were both on, in, on the front porch and inside the haunted house when it all started. So security is a big issue for us. I have families, lady that's here, our secretary, her son was working, her daughter was working. We're a big family company, we have a lot of family members, multiple family members from each family that is there. It's all family and friends. Any questions or any concerns? My neighbor up the road is concerned with people turning around. It's a state road, it's called Green Acres, turning around in Green Acres. They blocked the road the last few weekends with a barricade, and people are moving to the next road to turn around, they pull in, back up, turn around. They drove off the edge of the road and turned around when they were pulling in, the edge of people's yards. I've seeded and fertilized everyone's yard on the edges, who has contacted me, actually knocked on doors to see if anyone had damaged their yard. I fix anything anybody asks me to fix. I run a landscaping company also, after 30 years. I have no problem, if someone tears up something, it's my fault, I have no problem fixing it. I, I, I will take any suggestions of how to control the traffic once we close. We're working with a neighbor up the road who does marketing to try to put that out there to, at, at 8:30, if we are sold out, that it's put out in all the multimedia places that we are sold out. Don't come this way, we're sold out. So people don't show up looking at 10 o'clock, 10:30. I've, I have seven negative reviews, one-star reviews, I've never, we never have one-star reviews. We're one of the highest rated haunted houses in the state of North Carolina on all platforms. I had seven one-reviews because we turned them away. So I don't want that either. So, but I want to make sure that the traffic continues to flow. If they were flowing on that dirty road, turn on this road, then get right back to 85. But I don't know how to carry that. I spoke with a DOT man, his name's Freddie Goodnight, who lives in my neighborhood, he lives literally half a mile from me. And he's been a DOT for 30 years. He couldn't really tell me either. So our plans was this coming weekend to have a sheriff's station in my driveway, a sheriff's station at the Green Acres, there's three roads that come out close up above us where people are trying to turn around. A sheriff's station up there that continues the traffic all into this road, which, once you get on this road, will take you to 85. So we're trying to control. But we have done a percentage of maybe 5% of advertising that we did in the past this year. Only, we have, any, anyone who's in our area sees Reapers Round banners up at all the schools, sees it up at all, at the flea markets. We've put zero banners up this year, there's not a Reapers Round banner anywhere in the running county. There's not, we have not paid for any billboards, we've not done any of that, it's just word of mouth. It's just word of mouth. Um, I, I now have the problem of, we've done well and trying to control a crowd that we've done well, we, I mean, we've done well.
All right, uh, commissioners, I, I thought maybe we would, uh, have a public comment, bring Mr. Jenkins back up. Uh, maybe things might come out of public comments that we can take notes on and then, uh, bring Mr. Jenkins back up. Uh, if that's acceptable, let everyone do it that way instead of asking these questions and then having to do it without. Okay, maybe Craig and you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Good, okay. All right, thank you. All right, so, um, while this doesn't, uh, require, um, this permit doesn't require a public comment, we're gonna, in the interest of, uh, what's in the best interest of the community, we're gonna have that anyway. So, uh, if you'd like to, uh, come up, we'll give you three minutes because, um, well, I think that's fair, that's what we typically give us three minutes. So if anyone would like to come up and speak for or against, have any comments? And again, remind you, just keep it, uh, let's keep it good, okay? Anyone? And there could be someone outside. April, was there anybody in line?
We'd like to extend the invitation to anyone joining us remotely. If you'd like to use the raise your hand feature within the Zoom app, we'll get you put on the list to speak.
Uh, is anyone, is anyone here for this specific item? Okay. All right, Jay, can I have a second response over to the store?
Yes, sir. Um, Natalie, you shared on the emails that you received from the, you guys are a few of you there.
All right, uh, we'll give 10 more seconds if there's anyone that would like to, uh, comment. Now we'll close the floor. All right, so, uh, we may have some people on the way to enter downstairs who would like to also extend an offer, uh, to anyone downstairs that would, uh, like to speak. All right, uh, then commissioners, can we ask some questions for Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. I'll back up and, uh, eleven commissioners ask some questions. Judy, would you like to begin?
Sure. Um. Okay, so I was really concerned when I heard about the gunshots and you, and it was determined that there were two gangs from Charlotte. Is that correct?
Yeah, now, I probably knew as much as you, as you do. I was not even told the night that it happened that they had detained anyone and they were on my property. Um.
So they were on your property?
That they were, uh, the cars that actually shot each other never got out of their cars. Um, and they pulled in, parked, and I had a witness. I wanted the sheriffs to interview, it was an older man. He was parked, saw a truck pulling in and parked beside of him. Sitting there five minutes, pull up the side of the car, get out and shoot into the guy's car. Um, it, it, it was, they had no intent on coming for what we were there for. Um, that if they would have had an intent, they would at least got out and got the line, but they did not even get out of there. And I had a witness of that. I'm not sure if the sheriffs ever talked to them or told them, but they were, the sheriffs did a great job. It was a, and that's why the age thing has completely changed. Uh, and I have had a lot of customers calling me and say that, you know, hey, I can't, I, I've known you for years. I can't drop my 15-year-old off. I can't do that. I, I've, I've, I've literally, we field 100 calls, maybe 200 a day. And it's usually about, well, hey, I want to, I want to come and drop off. No, you can come sit in the parking lot and you don't have to pay. A parent does not have to pay to go in, but they just have to be on site. So they are responsible for those people that are in their car. And that's been a big thing, it's responsibility of, if a parent's there, Johnny's not gonna jump out of the car and run up and shoot somebody else. I would hope that a parent can control that. So that's one of the reasons we've changed our whole age limits and all of that. And it has, I wouldn't say her business, but it's changed the way people come in. Parents that normally wouldn't come or would drop them off or not drop them off. We've had 10 stop at the end of the drive, try to drop off sheriff catchers. And as soon as they get out of the car and says, no, sir, you gotta get back in the car. You can't be here on foot. Um, so we don't allow any of that. We don't allow them to jump out of one car into another on our property.
Okay. Okay, um, I do have a suggestion on how, how to control things a little bit. Um. I sign up for different webinars and there's always a limit on how many, you know, can come or, or join. And my suggestion simply is this, is that you make it a ticketed event. They don't pay upfront if you don't want them to, but that they're assigned a specific time that they have to be there. And if they do not make that time, that they are turned away. Because that, to me, that seems to be another way to control your crowd. So I would suggest you think about that and, um, oh, and then you're signed for 85. Um, I've hosted large events at my dairy farm and we always had to make our own signs. But we did and we put them up, um, on the roads around. So directing people in and out. So there again, if you want to get them out to 85, uh, make your own sign, put it up, take it down when you're done.
We were gonna try that. I wasn't sure about the DOT, I mean, I don't wanna do anything I'm not supposed to do. So I wasn't sure, Freddie wasn't sure whether or not I could make a sign, put it on DOT right of way and leave it up for the, now, he said, yeah, you can put it up temporarily, take it down here at night. But we weren't sure if we're gonna put up 20 signs to try to direct them all around. We weren't sure if we could keep them the duration of the month of October. And that was because I've got to get to the right person in the DOT, I guess, that can tell me if I can literally. And the neighbors have said they were good with that. They would be great with me putting the signs up. I've had any pushback from there. Um, that was my worry, someone said, I'm gonna sign them all, but nobody has said, there was, if you're directing traffic, please. So that, the time ticketing thing, um, I'll tell you what I, I'm big in the hunt industry, which means I'm on forums with other hunters in other states. What they're having trouble with time ticketing is they sell someone a ticket and they don't show up exactly when you tell them. And so then you have five groups show up when one group's supposed to show up because they're late. So if you turn them away, you make them customers mad and they don't want to come back. If, if you try to run them like that, then you still have a conglomeration of people all in one area. And so, and also time ticketing means you have to go online and do online sales. We are not an online sales business. Um, the reason, one of my reasons is I went to a haunted house last night and I did not buy my ticket online because when I went online to buy it, Groupon, I mean, uh, Haunt Pay, which is the company that hosts it, charges you a $3 fee to buy online. Also a tax on top of that. I went to the door and bought the ticket for $2 less than I could have bought it online. And the haunt made all the money, uh, Haunt Pay making the money. And, I mean, I know it's a service, so you're paying, or somebody's gonna pay that service. And I, and, and it may come to that, but Haunt Pay is a, it's not something I could jump into. I couldn't call them tomorrow and say, I want you to start selling all my tickets. It's something we still do.
Right.
And, and, and that's, the day and age we live in is electronics and people buying and people being able to, uh, buy a ticket online or buy a ticket somewhere. Or Groupon contacts me constantly, wants to sell my tickets, but we just have, there, that's another company. They want me to sell my ticket for $20 and then charge $30 for my ticket and they make a $10. That was the deal they offered us. So, or they can come to my door and buy the ticket for $25. And so that's the reason we haven't ever done that.
Um, tell me again about this 600 people drop, that got dropped off on the first, was it first night?
First night. It's been the only night, we haven't left since the first night. Um, we have not allowed to drop, that was the, that was the change right there for us was we had 600 teenagers who didn't have a ride. When we had the incident, they didn't have anywhere to go. So, and they were all Charlotte teens from different high schools who started fights between their selves and that probably the police couldn't control the teens. Everybody else got in their cars and left. But those teenagers were stuck there till the mom drops an hour from Charlotte, uh, and picks them up. Um, so I, I have sons and I, I have a 13-year-old son that's six foot one, weighs 180 pounds and I wouldn't drop them off anywhere.
I understand.
This day and age, I just wouldn't do it. But, um, I, I don't understand. I didn't understand, but now we don't allow it. So, and we had numerous people go on our Facebook and post, well, y'all can just close down because y'all, we won't, none of us come back. Uh, so it's teenagers and that was kind of what we were aiming for. Was that all unsupervised teenagers would not come back.
Yeah.
That was, as long as they got supervision, we've had zero issues. Uh, our sheriffs have had zero issues since that night, since we changed the age level. And they've even noticed the difference in the crowd and how they react and.
Yeah.
If the teenager's out of line, mom will stand in the side of them or dad's standing in the side of them to get them back in line.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Um, as far as security, um, the report from the deputy said he was having trouble getting, uh, deputies work and you mentioned that you were getting local, um, deputies or police officers to come from what China Grove and was it Seaford?
Let me, let me say that part again. Um, I have reached out to Sifford and Chad Moose, Deputy Moose, who is one of the first contacting me, um, our sheriffs. Um, and said, I, I know the China Grove police chief personally, I grew up with him. Uh, I went to him, he would, he would love to put it out, but he has to have the okay from Sheriff Alton to. And they have not received the okay to put it out for any outside officers to come help us. Uh, and, and I, I don't know how to. Uh, my attorney contacted Alton also for the same reason. Uh, we have not figured out why. But yes, they are, um, guys that are dropping other side jobs to come work because my main sheriff that's been with me for years has been with the sheriff's department, calls in friends and calls in papers to get the roster full. But it has been an issue. And I, I could easily bring in from other agencies. I've had other agency contact me, but it was all, has to be okay through the sheriff.
Okay, okay. Um, the only other suggestion, and I don't know if this would make a difference or not because I haven't personally been out to your property, but I know that because your neighbors are concerned, is there, have you ever thought about putting a privacy fence up between you and your neighbors?
Uh, I would, I, it would be, to do it all would be probably 10 acres of privacy fence. Uh, I mean, I, I don't really, I have woods around me, uh, on sides. And then I own the woods on one side. We actually own the woods, which is eight acres. Um, there is on the backside of my property and I speak with those neighbors rarely. There's three acres back up to me there and actually just talked to one yesterday. And, and we cut off, you know, I know the stigma of haunted houses or haunted trails are chainsaw, chainsaw, chainsaw. Um, we have 80 acres working, we have one chainsaw over us. Um, we, and at 12 o'clock, that chainsaw stops. Um, we, if we have anybody left in the trail that's lingering out, but we try to cut off that noise early. On Friday nights it's 11:30, on Saturday nights it's 12 o'clock. We try to cut that noise off early because I, I, I have a mother, my mother is usually there working. My mother was there that night, it happened also. She's 70 years old. Um, I, I wouldn't want somebody doing that to hurt.
Mm-hmm. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Jenkins. It's been very helpful.
Thank you.
Eric, anything from you?
No, I don't have any questions. Just whenever you get ready to vote, I'm ready to give you my comments on it.
Sir, um, earlier, uh, I'll probably just sit down for a minute. Did you say that you sell, you're selling X amount of tickets per day now?
Uh, we, we sell tickets until our parking is full. And as I said, we, it depends on who brings four of our trucks and who brings key of cars. Uh, we, we have a lot of guys that bring jack-up trucks for sake of our parking. We usually, if we had that happen, we can park about 270. Um, so when the parking lot's full, Saturday night, it was full at 8:30. We put a sign in the road, I'll station a deputy down there. Uh, we're sold out for the night, please move on.
So you don't wait for your crowd somewhere?
Um, Saturday night, um, we had, we were right at the beginning of the first 20 cars coming out. We brought those 20 out. We opened for 10 minutes, had 20 come in and that was it. I said, I don't want to bring any more in, we're not gonna get, so we sold Saturday night ticket was, we sold 960 something tickets. Um, so our threshold of how many people can go through in a night from the time we opened to the time we have to close is about 950 to 1,000 and that's our threshold period. Um, I, we can't, we can't get them through fast enough to do anything else.
Your goal is to shut all the sound down at 12?
Yes.
So to get the last through and through, what time do they have to start?
Um, they need to start through the house a little bit before 12 because it takes about 30 minutes to get them all the way through. Um, there's some areas on the backside of the trail that are, which is where you end up, that are in, it's closed, there's no noise in them, there's nothing, I mean, people walking through an area. But the parks that have, there's one that has a, uh, air horn, like a little blaster, a big, big horn and our chainsaw. But the chainsaw, uh, the neighbor was right behind me, um, Mr. Deacon, I've known him for years. Um, I asked him just the other day about it. Um, and he said, you know, I can hear it if I'm out on that porch, but, um, it's never woke me up. Um, so I, I, but I always try to cut off around that time.
What, um, now the commissioner asked questions too. We've got some fire department, they had some concerns to just get a talk to you.
Yes.
You're working on some of those issues?
Yeah, I've got pictures of everything. He came two weeks ago, I got the letter from him today at 3 o'clock. Um, I fixed the issues that day and actually all it was, we took the breaker panel down to replace a breaker. I ran out of time that night, went to the house, come back next day, he called me and said, we're gonna stop by. Okay, come on in. Um, I, I had nothing to hide, I was gonna show them through. And I told him, I sent him a picture of the fire extinguishers, which I thought was what he wanted me to send him. But I have a picture here of the breaker panel put back on and the receptacle covers put on. They had just been broke, the receptacle covers got broken when someone unplugged the compressor from.
I noticed that the, uh, fire department sheriffs, they were concerned about having one entrance to property. If I remember, I remember it's not so good to you, David. Um, we talked about this, I guess, I think 17, we looked over again. There was a little notch, a jet onto the other road, the other side. And I think there was some discussion about having another road there at some point.
Yeah, I, now that traffic is. Yeah, I, now that traffic has been the way it has been, that would be my goal for next year is to try to find another outlet. Uh, whether or not it be on that side of the property or. Buy a right of way out through the property in front of me. There's fourteen acres in front of me and the lady lives in California. Um, we've contacted her numerous times about buying it. Um, but she may as well sell me a right of way out to dark, which would pretty much just be a continuous loop. Uh, to get back out to the lane road. Yes, that is a concern. Or or widen, widen my driveway. I have a fifty foot right of way that feeds in off of stuff in those woods. Um, my driveway now is around twenty-two or twenty, I mean, it's very small, twenty foot wide. Um, there is two cars pass on the way over to me. Um, but it is very tight.
Well, yeah, I've, personally, I think you'd be better off having two, those that gas on. Someone blocks that off. Or maybe they block it off on purpose so they want to do something to your property.
No way.
I'm in a situation where the ambiances. Been blocked before and coming next season, so.
I could show you on the map too, the concerns of the fire chief, Boston Huns Fire Chief, um, put on his thing. I could show you on the overall map. Their way, I know we could clear the driveway immediately. Uh, on the two rental houses that side of me. From the point where the car stopped to get IDs checked to the rental house, it's longer than the point from there to the road. I can take every car on my drive and send them around my rentals driveway. And park them. Um, and and to get them out of the fire trucks way was what I was getting at. It's so fire truck could easily get out the driveway.
So are you able to get cars in and out in the same room as you know?
Yes.
But if it was some people on their job or whatever, to be able to.
And emergency, no, yeah. Yeah, we would have to clear the one side, which we have. If you, if they pull up the map, we could see where we, where we have an area over there. It's just a long, it's there gravel, gravel, leads over there.
So maybe you said that your goal is to close as well. I guess there's some people wanting things to fall past, well.
And if it is, it's not far as, I mean, I I, we're, we're, I have a small tour and we're there. We're not there two o'clock in the morning. We may be there, but we're not open. Uh, we we, after we close and everybody hangs around for a little while, we're not open, no music player and none of that stuff going on.
So the, um. Five deputies, five security.
Yes.
Policy that you put in place or?
Um, I actually put the five armed security in place before the sheriff's department ever contacted me. Um, my renter, renter is my neighbor. He was a ten year retired Marine, worked Bank of America Security. He was a wanderer there. He's been trained to work at Bank of America. He said, I would like to do the one. Um, my daughter works here. I would like to make sure nobody comes in and has something. Uh, that they're not supposed to have. So he does wandering for five hours straight or four hours straight, as long as he is. Wandering everybody, patting down. We have a sheriff that stands with him. Uh, actually, it's a deputy that works at Porch. That does the wandering for us. Um, he's been the one that's been there every weekend. Um, but we have a sheriff and my, my security there and then we have other security guards throughout the parking lots because that was always a concern was. What if this Michael was in the parking lot and. Does something bad, what, you know, or they're out of the car and they're trying to start a fight with the car, two cars over. Uh, that having two security has helped a lot because it's easy for my guys to walk in and say, hey, y'all can't be out with your cars. You have to sit in cars, waiting for cars. We've really had no pushback. Um, on that from customers.
So other than, um. So I guess the night of the incident, there was three deputy taken?
Yes, no, four. There was one at the end of the road, the three, all up at the haunted house.
Since then, you've, uh, been able to get these five?
Uh, every night at one. We had four, the, uh, other, I think it was Friday, I read four. They could not get the fifth slot. I can get the fifth slot field. I actually had another security guard there. I had six security there because they let me know in advance that they weren't gonna have it. So I called another friend and I knew that it was ex-military, I mean, most of those guys are. Most of those guys don't want trouble around our area either, so they're more than happy to come. Be a presence.
Well, what's it from experience, the higher the pay, the easier it is to get it?
I, I. I I agree with that, but I also, I've been told differently. The, 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 the interstate's paying fifty dollars an hour and they can't get you food. My brother was a sheriff. The interstate's paying fifty an hour and they can't fill it.
It's a lot cheaper.
Uh, I could have been at a point, there comes a point you don't, uh, you know, paying out three to four thousand dollars a night in security. Um, there comes a point you just stop selling tickets. You just gotta catch your tickets back and not pay those, not have to pay those. Um.
I guess my last. Question, um, it's kind of from Jay is that. The regional, uh. Regional conditional use that we improved was out for one year?
We, we have been approving. Temporary use permits. So the current use is one trailer permitted at some. And because initially it was more temporary use before you could grow to this. It was probably appropriate to do that. Um, because it's four weekends, five weekends, six weekends a year. Um. Didn't know how many people go or how many people be there. Um, but I think what this year is bringing to our attention is that it's not really a temporary use. He's saying that it's his livelihood. Um, and it's regular. So temporary use is probably not going to be appropriate one term in my opinion, by legal.
Well, what, I guess that's my question is, uh, how long was the temporary use good for?
Two years. We did it two years. So we, we did temporary use permit in. Two thousand seventeen and eighteen. There was not an application for temporary use permit in nineteen and not from this year until tonight.
We did, I didn't know it was a two, uh, that was my, that was my fault, one hundred percent.
And, but anyway, that's a question we're gonna have to resolve. Is. Do we continue to do temporary use permits or are you using permanent, although the season. It's more permanent now than it was when we began the process, temporary use permits.
But does it, um. But they may get permanent, then he won't come back every two years.
Well, you you could make it permanent because then it would be a temporary use.
Yeah.
The answer is either get it resumbed or find appropriate resumbed property to do it. Long term.
Thank you.
Uh. My questions were about visitors, uh, uh, or guests that you have there and it takes them about thirty minutes to go through the frame?
Yeah, on an average.
So you've got some kids in the car for three hours about there?
Um. Yeah, I, I guess Saturday night we did, yeah. Friday night, we did not. We never stopped selling Friday night. We stopped selling tickets at eleven thirty. We never filled up. All of this is totally new to us. We've never sold out in ten years. It's almost, and we, we never expected this year. We, we were told about industry, we would be down fifty percent. Because that's pretty much across the board nationwide is what's happening. And this year, so now we're trying to figure out every weekend a new. Okay, this is not, thi- this is a new problem.
Yeah, I, I hope you can, I hope you can work something out. Uh, we're not trying to tell you how to run the business, but. Having teenage children, you understand.
Yes.
Having teenagers in the car for three hours.
I agree.
It does not conducive to anything to.
Yes, I agree. Uh, that's the reason with eighteen, it does. It does at least have someone there to supervise and that's why we've kind of tried to. Compress that down because I, I, I'll, I agree with you. That's why the drop offs totally stopped. There was no supervision and it was not our job to supervise other people's. It wasn't a daycare, it was a business. Um, which I think a lot of people kind of tried to use this as a daycare, but we're gonna drop off your, the home.
Uh. It, it's, it seems to me that. And again, I, I did not call you. I should have called you and let you show me around. Uh, but the, the driveway just is not conducive to having hundreds of people in and out. So I, I would hope that lighting and fixing that driveway would be part of.
Yes, I would, widening the driveway, I would, I would, but seeking another exit would be a.
Yeah.
That would be the easiest really, it actually would, but.
Yeah.
Um.
Again, we.
There would be some traffic somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Always thinking about emergency vehicles, happy to get in there.
And that was my, when I talked with Mike was, you know, where we check IDs at. We could have at most twenty cars down the driveway. Or checking IDs from, I can pull those twenty cars out of the emergency vehicle way. Whether or not we check your ID or not, around, out of the way where they could come up the drive. And get into the haunted house that's on fire, if someone has a heart attack or whatever.
Those. Uh, uh, but if they're on the trailer and they have cars on there.
If they're where?
If they were, if the people parked on the driveway.
No, we don't allow that. There's a sheriff at the very end of the, no, I think that was said earlier, no, we do not allow parking. Pass, when you come up my driveway, it comes up a little hill and I don't know how, if you turn left or right, but. You turn left, you go towards the haunted house. That's where you check IDs at. There's a sheriff at the end of my driveway and an ID checker at the top of the road. We do not allow any pull offs, parking, nothing along the sides.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. So I'm not here to scold you. I'm, I'm, I'm a little disappointed with one thing you said.
Okay.
And and that is that you feel like you're attacked.
No, I didn't, it wasn't by y'all. No, it was not by the county. It's, it's by the people that came the first night. That was what I felt attacked. That they brought that trouble to my business.
I get that and we're certainly not holding you responsible for shooting.
That, that was what I felt attacked and that has nothing to do with any, anything else of this.
It seems like, uh, it's not part of someone shooting, so we don't understand that, but, um. That's, that's the time we, we find ourselves in.
Yes, sir.
Um, you know, we did a permit in twenty seventeen. I remember that was kind of. Another long meeting like this and so I don't, I don't know why there was confusion, why you didn't have to come back because in eighteen. Well, nineteen and twenty, there was no permit. And the only reason we're sitting here today is because there was a shooting.
Yes, sir.
If there wasn't a shooting, none of us would have thought about this, this event even going on. It's, it's only because of, of, uh, a trick. Luckily, not tragic shooting, but a stupid shooting certainly that went on or we, we wouldn't be sitting here and these folks. These good folks would already have had their say on another issue and we'd probably be home right now. Um, no building permits. Uh, we're, we're pulled, I guess, on, so I know we're trying to work through that issue.
Yeah, my engineers talked with Congressman Kelly, um, and he wants my engineer to go. Look at the buildings, draw the plans, sign off on the builds. There actually were existing buildings somewhere else. They're pole buildings. They were brought, took down in one place and put back up there. That's all there are.
Um, hey, so I'm. I'm concerned about the security thing still and, um, I don't know if you can remind us, but. The issue of having ten security, was that us? Was it, did you come up with that? How did we come up?
Siffr, Siffr, when they, or actually Moose, when he contacted me, said they wanted me to have five.
Five sher.
Sheriffs. And then he asked me, did I have anyone else? I said, I've already lined up because I was told the night it happened and sheriffs would not be back.
Okay, so having, having our five, is that an addition to what you heard? I, I, I think we're confused about. Um, does the event just require five security? Or were we providing only five sheriffs out of the needed ten?
No, the Moose required five sheriffs. That's what they thought would take.
Good.
With the new plan with people staying in the cars, because they love, that, that was the first thing he said. I love your new plan. It's huge going in the right direction.
Now, the, the email we got from, uh, Officer Basinger says that. Uh, during their time working in security there, numbers of range from anywhere from a hundred. Uh, to sixteen hundred on a single night.
Yeah, the, the night of the shooting, we don't know, we never sold the tickets. It happened before the tickets ever got sold.
And and I was looking at the permit that you're, you're pulling here, that you're asking for. And according to, um. The application, days and hours of operation, Friday and Saturday, five to twelve, Sunday, five to nine. Now, the email that we received from Officer Basinger says at the bottom of page one, at approximately twelve thirty AM. Okay, that was October eighteenth, so twelve thirty AM would have been, uh.
They were.
Sunday, so it's Saturday.
Yeah.
He, he did say that at approximately twelve forty five AM, uh, Deputy Miller, Deputy Clayton. Well, let's see, we were, uh, there were approximately fifty or a little more standing in front of the haunted house waiting to enter. So it, it looks like it's, it is still running a little long.
Not twelve forty. I actually was sent to sheriff's home in the last group that went in that night. Uh, and that's what I usually do is I wait till. Everybody's went in before we ever, and usually we hold one after that. Um, at least one with a more car. Till I can get people out of the trailer.
Um. So the, the only other question I guess that I had is regarding the sheriff. Or, or in, in, uh. Uh, Officer Basinger said that it is difficult to get more folks, um, to get more folks there. Um. So this is something the sheriff Alton has to approve in order to go outside.
I've been told that by everybody. I, I, I was told that by his. Uh, Siffr, uh, or I was told that through Moose, by Moose through Siffr. Um, and I was told that by Andrew, uh, Deal, uh, Chief of China Grove. And I've also been told that by a couple of land scouts.
So again, you know, we, we don't hold you certainly responsible for the shooting. I think, uh, that. You put into place a lot of, uh. A lot of rules and new operating procedures, I think, that, that helps in this situation. You know, what it really comes down to in a lot of this, uh, is. In this area. With neighbors. Is this, is this event getting smaller? Is it gonna be less loud? Is, is this just something that we're gonna have to say? To neighbors for the rest of their lives? You're just gonna have to deal with it in September, October? Because, you know, we've gotten a lot of emails.
Oh, I.
And we, we've gotten a lot of calls.
No, I've spoken with ninety percent of my neighbors.
So I, I would say that you won't find a group of commissioners that is more committed to private property rights. But private property rights also extend to your neighbors. And so where, uh, your private property rights end is where theirs begin. And so, um, we could say to you, well, we'll just, uh, we'll, we'll do a permanent, uh, um. Permitting on, on this and then we've got lots and lots of folks who are angry on the other side. So back to the wisdom part of, you know, what, what do we do? Um, Craig, I, I know your way to kind of talk about what we do. From my perspective, uh, you know, I'm. We're, we're already into this Halloween season and we're already. Four, four weekends?
Hmm.
It's four weekends?
There's kind of a reason for that. Thanks, man.
So this will be.
It's kind of.
Somewhere.
Yes.
Your defense, so. You know, I, I'll a- agree to, to approve, you know, the remainder of this year, but. I, I don't wanna go forward with another few year plan until we really have an opportunity. To sit down and determine where, where we is, uh, uh, four minutes ago with, with you. That takes into account the rights of our folks or. We'll, we'll just have to work, work that direction.
Uh, that's, that's fair. I, I. Uh, there's, if. We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. We spent seventy-five thousand dollars on sprinklers. we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, we just put seventy-five thousand dollars on sprinkler system, and our haunted house has a full sprinkler system. The, and we, we, the options, someone said about moving to a commercial piece of property, it's, it's just not, it's a stick built on a foundation. Haunted house is what it is. I mean, it's, it's not a, it's not a apartment complex in the current, it's not a residential house that's turned, was turned into it. It was actually built for what it is. Um, and I never imagined, ever imagined, it would turn into what it has. So the capacities is, that's what we're looking for next year, is capacities going down per night. But maybe being open another night or two to make it for compressing those capacities down per night.
Um, so, so you understand, David?
Yes, yes, I do, yes.
And we also understand that by saying we never imagined doesn't, um, provide permit.
I agree.
And it, and it, and it doesn't mean that, um, if, if this exploded into uh, double what it's doing now, that that is good for, uh, residential neighbors. I mean, just because we never imagined, doesn't, doesn't give a license, or it doesn't mean that we don't have to take it going down. Uh, listen, this is a, this is a, what they say in, sticking with it.
I understand totally.
Yeah, this is tough, so we better look out for everyone.
I have no issues with you not extending me a full, I, 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 I have no issue with that. I, I do not. I, I, I want to keep everything flowing in the right direction and everything safe as it's supposed to be. I don't mind revisiting to show you that we're still staying safe and we're still doing the practices we set.
Craig?
Well, Mr. Chairman, um, as much as I appreciate people being their own business owner, because you and I and Jim are the same way. Um, I think he's gone to pretty good lengths to try to make it a safe place. Uh, the only suggestion that I would have, if it looks like that this capacity situation that he's dealing with is going to continue to be an, an issue, should we not request that he look into having it rezoned and having everything brought up to accommodate this many people and that much traffic? Um, I mean, I understand where he's coming from and I understand that, you know, this, this has gone beyond what he thought it would be in his expectations. But I'll go, I'll yield back to Commissioner Green, you know, we, we got to keep our citizens safe. And if that means that he has to make some improvements, like a secondary, uh, exit, or, or if he needs to, uh, improve his egress and ingress, then that needs to be addressed through the permitting process. And, um, with that being said, um, I, I'm not opposed to letting him have what he needs to finish out this year and then get with, uh, the, the planning department and, and inspection department, and let's see what they think he needs to do to be able to handle these, uh, crowds in the, in the future. Uh, if, if it doesn't seem to grow, if it, if it becomes stationary or even stagnant, then we could pull back to the temporary use. But that's just my opinion on it.
Uh, thank you, Craig. Hey, um, Ed, uh, could you, could you go rejoin us? So does, does, uh, does yourself and staff feel like we have what we need at this point to finish off this year? Are there additional conditions? That you would, would recommend?
I haven't heard of conditions yet. I think what I've heard is that several of you feel that you would allow him to continue on as he's done to this day. I've heard of things about shorting hours of oper, I'm, I'm just using this in the segue. I mean, I haven't heard anything that would lend itself to a condition at this point. Um, and he's sort of between five, um, private security and three to four, sometimes five sheriff deputies. No, I, I don't know. Those weren't standards that when we met with him on the thirtieth, that we we, we suggested. I mean, that, that was one of the things that he came up with, he said, hey, this is what I'm going to do. Um, to talk about this ticket matter, of, um, ensuring that, that there was not going to be drop offs, how it was getting, things like that, but, um, in terms of a condition, I haven't heard of that. You know, certainly the board has the discretion to approve it in any manner in which not going to answer your question, but he has proposed conditions as related to his operating procedures. That, that's what we sort of accepted, is his self imposed conditions. We didn't put a cap on the number of people that could be there, if that's what you're thinking. I think you certainly could consider, um, parking issues, in some way to resolve parking issues. Um, you could put a cap on the total number of people that are allowed to be inside.
We see that list, a list from the, uh, past gathering ordinance from eighteen seventy-five.
Um, and the only, the other concern was from Mr. Caskey as regard to maintaining an emergency lane. That's going to instruct me, you're rather than waiting to clear traffic, kind of way to issue emergency. Maintaining that, and emergency vehicles, with access to the interior, that was what I've heard. But you can certainly consider those kinds of conditions, I think. And, and then the other question is whether you want to prove that the remainder of the season for the end of Halloween season and reserve, you know, any future approval, um, or consideration.
Well, um, the, the things I would think that we, that are a little bit improved is you're applying for a certain time, it's not cut off. Um, so you're up to handle that. If the sheriff says you need to be five, you need to, need to arrange that. And if there's three or two, or, I mean, in here, um, they refer to, there's times when there's three or two.
About six, this is.
Well, four last year, we always had two, um, on duty. That was. Well, this, this ride just handed to, handed to us. Said there were times where others, he, uh, you know, he needed to have us make a call, and the sheriff up would be happy to do that, but um, you know, this became a real public safety issue. When shots are fired, you know, there's all kinds of other things that we're concerned about these days, COVID and and all that. When shots are fired, um, now we get our nose in it. Because, um, we are, we are interested in public safety. And so, um, the times that you're applying for, uh, I think need to be restricted here to five, you know, open, you know, five sheriff deputies or his, you know, he allows.
That's, that's my question. If they came to provide five.
Well, today's Monday.
Yeah.
But so we'll get ahold of the sheriff and we'll see if we can, uh, work with Nyro or whatever, yeah.
We are not, we are not here outside, yeah.
So we're concerned about that. Um, I, I don't know what we do about the, uh, ingress and egress of, of the road, if there's a way to keep that open, but that, that's a huge, huge safety issue, fire safety issue. We've got to get fire trucks in there, emergency vehicles. So, um,
Does, does safety, can you just reduce your, or is there physical restriction?
There's a physical restriction. This second, there's a culvert. That the creek runs over, that's, you can grab the water. It's, I would, I would say in the park, I would, I would quit, but that is it's, it's a, I've been easily extended to fifty foot. I just don't, I can't, it's a weather issue. It's a weather issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to see an ambulance on site for all of the hours that are open. It's very much similar to, um, having, uh, EMS available on site at, um, sporting events for like high school.
Uh, and, and we'll ask, because we did do that in two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah.
But now the sprinkler issue did require fire ambulances to be on site. Um, do you have an ambulance that's on site in the interior?
I have one ambulance.
But, but could you, could you get, like we did four years ago, could you get someone to provide that service on site?
We have two being there on site that are big certified EMS, and we're going to provide them with them. Is that okay with you? They do ring?
I was having a hard time hearing.
Uh, he says they have two certified EMS folks on site.
Hmm. No, not for me. Um, I think that you need a bus there. And, uh, you know, because it's, it's fully loaded with everything you need to uh, get a patient safely to the hospital. Uh, they can be working on them and, and, uh, all the time that they're driving to the hospital.
All right, if they're coming, that's, that's my issue, maybe the sheriff. I'll, I'll reach out to our, our leaders. We've never had to party, we did have a fire, fire department before this emergency. We never had to party, we did have.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to make a comment, please, sir.
Please, go ahead.
If, if I'm not mistaken, his temporary permit says that their operations are from five to twelve, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
But yet we have evidence that people are still on, on site at twelve thirty, twelve forty-five. So they're breaking their permit by having these people on premises after the permit hours have expen, have, have expired.
Yeah, we, we brought that up. That was in, uh, Officer Basinger's ride up. We brought that up to the applicant and, uh, addressed that and said that these times have got to be, um, they've got to be a year or two.
Well, if, if it's a problem that they, they continue to let people go through until twelve o'clock, and then they process them out after they go through the haunted house, then possibly should we cut the hours back to eleven thirty to give them time to get off site during that permit time? I mean, if we're going to set, uh, requirements for the temporary use permit, then.
Well, maybe if you just specify they need to be on a property limit. Do they have to be off of property, or they have to be out of the law? I'm just asking. I, I know, I'm going to do it for me. It seems to still be a part of the news. A couple hundred folks there at twelve thirty, sitting outside the cars and.
We usually activate relief, you know.
What, what time do you start again?
Uh, we don't allow cars, our actors come in at five o'clock, we start at five. Our actors come in at five, uh, customers aren't allowed to come in and park until six. Um, and that's supposed to end the reception.
All right, well, let's, uh, let's, um, let's go ahead and wrap this up, because this has gone a lot longer than any of ours, longer than anticipated. So, uh, with a condition of, uh, uh, of five, uh, your county or municipal, um, law. Your shutdown and folks gone by, by midnight.
Mr. Chairman? I would also like to add, once again, the, um, EMS. There are local ambulances, uh, I can't remember the, the name of them, but they go out, um, for lesser emergency calls, um, you know, instead of our EMS, county EMS people. And, uh, I don't really think that that is too much to ask. Because, uh, you never, you never know when someone will have a heart attack or fall or, you know. So I really would like to see that ambulance there.
If, if they don't, Matt, here. This crowded, please have. Let's do year to year permit, until we can get all the screen out. We'll, we'll permit this for twenty-four and then after, if I scale. Craig, anything else from you?
Uh, I'd just like to reiterate that if, if this is going to continue to grow, that we need to look at rezoning the property.
Yes. So we're looking at the purpose for the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, thirty, thirty-first. It's the remaining time. Yes. This night is Friday. What was, they, they have to clear, I mean, everyone has to be on the park. Okay, what day is it? What day is it, you say? Since, since twenty, twenty-sixth, twenty, no, I'm sorry, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, thirty, thirty-first.
Yeah, we're, the twenty-ninth, the Thursday before Halloween, we're, we're open until nine o'clock. I'm sure that guy talked about, did, I did in the meeting, but he, the last Thursday, I was, because I only fall on the Thursday sometimes. So we actually did Thursday from nine o'clock.
Six, six one days?
Yes.
All right, uh, so those are the items, five places, we cleared out midnight, EMS on site. So we'll approve that through the, through the, are you open the thirty-third?
Yeah.
Okay, to the thirty-first of twenty-twenty. I'll make that in form of a motion.
Second.
Give me a second, thank you for the discussion. All right, volunteer, say hi.
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 Thank you. Sorry. Yeah, sorry, that's all. Welcome to government. But thank you all, uh, that are here for hanging in here. We, we really do appreciate it. Is Scott still here?
He's, wait.
Someone, someone jarred Scott. Scott, thank you for being here. Here's Scott, this is Scott Shelton. He is, uh, second in charge at our economic development commission. He's an important guy in our community. He helps bring jobs and invest in our community. Over frontline guys. Um, anytime he's here in front of us, it's for good news. So if you ever tune in on channel sixteen and you see Scott behind the microphone, uh, know that it's for something good. So Scott?
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, board members, for agreeing to hear this presentation for uh, private enterprise. Made some technical assistance on this. I'm trying to share the screen here, everybody messed it up. Um, sorry, Craig and Judy, can you see my presentation at this point?
I don't see anything.
Yeah, I don't either.
Now I do.
There we go.
Sorry, everybody. Uh, again, the product is called Private Enterprise. Um, this is, uh, an existing company, um, that is based in the northeastern part of the United States. Uh, it's an established company. It's been around. is based in the northeastern part of the United States. It's an established company. It's been around for about fifty years, has a good reputation in this field. Um, the company is trying to expand out of this existing, I guess, base in the Northeast. They're trying to get a foothold down south and they hinted the Charlotte area as a good first step in that process. If rolling county were chosen for this project, the company would create about one hundred and forty-two jobs over the next four years. And this isn't one of those top type of projects. Out of those hundred and forty-two jobs, hundred and twenty would be in the manufacturing production of the business capital. So anyway, it's a good balance there, I think. Uh, the remaining twenty-two or so jobs would comprise of management, sales, administrative type positions. Now, again, if we're only kind of chosen, they would invest about seventeen and a half million dollars in improvements too. So they would be looking at existing building of rolling county, which is a state that's from existing building, they would improve it, adequate it. Most of this will be done by the end of twenty twenty-two, and we are in competition to this project. Looking at another county in the Charlotte area of North Carolina and also one across the line in South Carolina. Uh, now, in this case, there's no issues with this. The property is under manufacturing. I think there would be a smoother transition as far as the permitting process. Uh, now, the company is requesting a level one incentive grant. You all are familiar with that. That's where they get seventy-five percent of their increased tax revenue back as a grant in five years. Um, again, it's a standard request, nothing outside of the norm. The financial assumptions in your packet are based on, uh, the current tax rates being the same that ever happened with what we have for this model study. And also about eleven, six million in new equipment construction being done by the end of this year. Uh, this is something they think can transition into pretty quickly, but the overall party would be done by the end of twenty twenty-three, and there's where you see that seventeen and a half million dollar investment. Now, of course, already incentivized for years, the company would get the grant as mentioned. Uh, the county presented about one hundred twenty-four thousand dollars in revenue during that time. In over ten years, just under seven hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue. And we all work with the state on this project. Uh, the company is seeking a building reuse grant from the state of North Carolina. You have more improvements to the facility. Uh, the dollar amount is four hundred thousand dollars. Of course, uh, the county has to apply for this grant on the company's behalf. So there's a resolution in your packet, uh, that we ask you, you can consider approving for submission of a building reuse grant application to the state of North Carolina. This does require a five percent match, uh, which is twenty thousand dollars. That match can be satisfied through the taxes and grant that the county normally considers for these projects. And also, there's a condition for applying for the grant, and the county would require promissory notes from the property owner secured by a letter of credit. Normally, it's a deed of trust, but the company requested, I'm sorry, property owner requested a letter of credit. I did talk with county attorney. I think the defense had to be acceptable under these circumstances. Another request we have is that the county consider hiring a professional grant administrator to administer this grant. Uh, we asked if that costs even more than fifteen thousand dollars. So in summation, the things we're asking for from the board tonight is a level one grant for Private Enterprise. Authorizing the submission of a building reuse grant, and then four hundred thousand dollars for the state of North Carolina. Authorizing the hiring of a grant administrator, and also authorizing the county chairman, county manager, and staff to execute the grant application, and any other related documents. So in summary, uh, this project would create about one hundred forty-two jobs, uh, well-paying jobs over the next four years. Uh, during the five-year incentive period, county would pay about one hundred twenty-four thousand dollars of revenue. And over ten years, about nine hundred, I'm sorry, about eight hundred thousand on the right. All nine, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue. Again, this is the opportunity to bring a well-respected, long-time manufacturer for our account. So I'd be glad to answer any questions and thank you for considering this request.
Average, baby.
Yes, sir. Um, we were just told average second would be a little over forty-six thousand dollars per year.
Scott, will all these jobs be full-time jobs?
Yes, they're full-time benefits, and we also got a brightening job creation. Uh, out of these one hundred forty-two jobs, about eighty-three will be created by the end of twenty twenty-one. And then twenty-three more by the end of twenty twenty-two. Uh, twenty-eight more by the end of twenty twenty-three, and the final eight by the end of twenty twenty-four.
So again, again, for those that are visiting with us tonight, we appreciate you being here. Um, you know, we we have to try to compete with other communities to bring business to here and do this. In a number of ways, one of them is incentivizing something paid to do, but it's part of the game. The most important thing, um, is we don't lose out on all of our tax revenue over a five-year period. We still retain one hundred twenty-three thousand dollars of the tax that is due. But the bigger thing is, is for families to bring good paying jobs here. Forty-six thousand without benefits. Our benefits, full-time benefits will be on top of that. You're looking at over six and a half million dollars a year that this company will invest in rolling county's people. Through, uh, just salary, you could add to that probably under fifteen to twenty percent of benefits. And so, uh, the the county is more concerned about getting good jobs, good paying jobs, investing in folks. Uh, the the tax revenue is certainly important, but the more important thing is raising our standard of living. So that's a good thing.
Yeah, and one thing, let's, uh, we'll work out, this is a pretty fast-moving project. We anticipated a company decision by the end of this month.
Uh, Scott, what skill level required to give forty-six thousand dollars a year a job? Have you gone over any of that?
Well, uh, they are talking with community colleges now for for training, um, but, uh, they didn't give any specifics. For one, they did say that attracted in two of our campuses, the large pool of skilled workers. Um, but, uh, as far as minimum requirements, uh, they have expressed a willingness to train. Um, that I think they'll be, it'll be one of those circumstances where the more experienced personnel or people will get preferential. I guess, uh, treatment as far as the hiring process. We all are aware of the fact that maybe a skills gap there, so the community college is ready to step in and help with that.
Any other questions? Not as we have, yeah, uh, we'll need a motion to approve. We need to do a public hearing, yeah. So, uh, we'll open for a public hearing for anyone. Um, what we're doing is if we're going to dedicate some of this tax revenue to attract this company, we have to apply law here from you. Uh, so there may be some that, um, want to say something in favor of this, or some that may be opposed. Part of the process, open for a period of public comment. April, do you see anyone?
We'd like to also extend the invitation to our remote participants. If you are interested in speaking, you can use the raise your hand feature within the Zoom app or star nine on your phone if you're joining by telephone.
Hearing none and open for a public comment, um, as because we're in this Zoom. We have folks that twenty-four hours to submit any comments they may have. Uh, but if there are none other than the need to motion approve incentives for EDC project.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion that we move forward with this project and we have a level one grant for Private Enterprise of seventy-five percent over five years. Authorizing submission of four hundred thousand dollar rural building reuse grant application to the state of North Carolina. Authorize a, our authorization hiring of a professional grant administrator who administers the rural building reuse grant and authorize the county chairman, county manager, and staff executing grant application and other grant dollars.
That's motion. We have a second.
Second.
All right, correct. Any further discussion? All right, then all the bear say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? I just have it. Thank you, Scott. Thank you for your good work and, uh, let's know and get the good news. All right, we'll move ahead. We're going to have a quasi-traditional hearing, uh, for CUP oh one dash twenty. Consider uh, the need or request. So I need to read this. The hearing for consideration of CUP oh one dash twenty is now sessionable focus on application submitted by Sarika Springs, constructed event center on Saks Parkville one twenty-six dash one hundred, located at one 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 five Brookwood Drive. If feel things under the board may have a conflict of interest in hearing the case, please address the board now, prior to any testimony or information presented. When the board enters into deliberations to discuss the case, no further testimony will be presented. The board will render one of the following three decisions. One will approve the permit as requested or with additional conditions. Two will continue the request, or three deny the request. All parties who plan to testify in this case, they come forward and be sworn in. Those who testify must state their name and address, podium, for the benefit of the board's clerk. All material presented must be given to the clerk and will become part of the record. This court will only accept sworn testimony. No hearsay evidence is admissible and Shane Stewart will present the case for the county. And does this, this include folks who would want to get up and speak here in public, Kelly? All right, so if there's anyone here that wants to speak about this issue, you'll need to come forward and be sworn in.
Needing.
Are you?
Great.
Well.
Who are you starting? Shane Stewart, Raleigh County, Plank, four oh two, North Main Street, Salisbury. As Chairman Red, the purpose of this meeting is to consider additional use permit oh one twenty for an event center and also SNIA oh one twenty in St. Porcell. The owner and applicant is Rick Springs at her property at one fifteen, or eleven fifteen, Studio Brookwood Drive. And if you take a look at the string here, you see the property outlined in red instead of white. It's approximately thirty miles south of one fifty-two on Brookwood Drive. Get you a orient here. This is Beaver Loop. And if you actually come off of one fifty-two, you really don't know that there's two different roads. It just changes here at Brookwood Drive. It's one continuous movement. And, uh, for clarification, this code here is the China Verisone in their city. Also, the Carson High School, there for records. The two thousand eighteen area footage that shows the eight point one five acre tract. And we see residents there that's depicted there, but south of center at Porcell. And also, this area here is kind of a unique to that location. It's a CDIC zone area that was approved back in two thousand six by the commission. And it houses the Carolina side works commercial use. And they access here off of a way to drive just north of that, where the, where the strand. It's also the Brookwood Mobile Home Park. And then you see surrounding residences here nearby. There's an adjacent agriculture field and career. Got a closer image here. Let's start with an overview. This is a full copy of the site line here. You see some information at the top and bottom containing details to talk about. But a few highlights, the request, again, additional use permit would allow for an event center. That you also, with the applicant, she's proposing that, uh, the site would be used for summer day activities for kids. And also the training opportunities for her to share with other event lanes to come to the site and learn more about the history. The primary structure there would be this fifty-five hundred square foot facility with the events. And also, there's an outdoor space here for serpents on site and other things that we're talking about for. The hours and days, it would be Monday through Sunday. Would be nine in the five P M. for daily operations and also for events up to eleven P M. The applicant can speak more specifically to those directions, but primarily just to capture any potential, um, event in the evening or things during the day to use the facility for. A maximum guest side is imposed of one hundred and twenty-five guests. So let's zoom into the site. Coming down Brookwood Drive and coming to the existing drive that serves the Springs residents here. The proposal would be widen this driveway to accommodate two-way traffic. It does have, it's not a drop of permit, but it has a letter from DOT that states a permit's not required for the facility, but a lot of language in there is very similar to a permit, such as standard for paving first fifty feet, access being perpendicular to the road. Um, but again, from what it's worth, it wasn't made a permit, but it was their authorization that and technically, it was based on a whole point that showed the access up here and a brand-new driveway. But regardless, when I spoke with DOT, the existing drive is suitable as well and could even be better. Because it could be a second cut on Brookwood Drive. You see, when you come into the site, make the first turn here to the right, this would be the, I could say, the main part of the area, but it would be the first one you would come to gravel area, and then also in the back, you see this other area here, a driver. One thing that we talked about with the applicant a couple of weeks ago is something that happens quite often with gravel parking lots. You don't really have an identified area. Where am I supposed to park? I may take up a little bit more room than when you have a pay space to strike or you're not cheating on the adjacent areas. Really, so this. Really, so this spring's indicated she most likely would put some kind of either four-by-four, six-to-six by post or something that's on the ground, the nose is big to denote each of those spaces. They do total 65 in number collectively. There's a few grass areas here along the road and also office room here, this parking area for, what she identified would be overflow parking for this, that the 65 was not in common there. The zeebo area here would be the focal point for outdoor ceremonies. The stage here for the seating arrangement. Couple of things that, I'm not going to go into all the details of this statute board, trying to hit some highlights here. I think it might be more beneficial for the board to hear, but I did want to touch on the noise. There's two different noise sources while I'm on the sheets. First which would be amplified sound. The board constantly hears every year a few requests to exceed those ones. That is the ordinance we're talking about here. It's amplified sound that's identified by the responding officer on a call of nuisance-based noise that within 100 feet, the source was regularly identified. So that's chapter 14. The other would be these other ones, 21241, that indicates a maximum decibel level of 70 by 11:00 p.m. And in both of those instances, the applicant indicated that primarily she would feature background music for outdoor ceremonies, not blasted music, but for what it's worth, it's very important because with an event center, that's typically the first concern as a noise. So those are the two that would apply. The SNI permit, as you know, is related to the watershed standards. This watershed allows only 12% in purview scope. Built on area of gravel, pavement, rooftop. And the request would, and consider right now, is residential, which is just based on how many homes per parcel. But it would be 20% and therefore need the intensity allocation too by the board. And one thing I did want to point out, it's not on your plan, but I do want the public to be aware and also for the board, the Springs also, I think they have some current storage buildings in the back and maybe some need for more. I think they left there a few years, but they have interest in putting some personal storage buildings on this side of that residential dash red line that's 100 foot setback. But they want personal storage buildings for their items to be in this location here. It's not related to the event center. They live here too. They, I'm sure probably want to keep this area a little separated in terms of the viewing interest for those that gather, but those buildings will be located here, personal storage, not associated with events. Alright, let's take a look at a few pictures. In top left and clockwise, we'll go with the road mark back, we're looking at the Springs residents here. And on the top left or top right, you can see the house corner here, and this is just an open grass area here. That parking area extends beyond the residence and that could be some overflow potential. Looking down the existing drive, the event center would be located approximately in this location. Her the plane, which is probably general in nature, it's about 400 feet off of the main road. And here's another view, kind of, looking back into that space. Top left, this is the Wallace residence at 1140. Probably has the best view of the events directly across the road, good view of the site. Down below it, on the south of the home park. It'll have a view to the site, a little bit muted with the trees and the angle, but some visibility to the location. This is their property frontage, it continues on down, contains invasive woods and their houses here to the right. And how on the opposite side of the road, the Beaver residence, 1050. To the left, you can see here, and then this is Collins property. And across the road, very good across from these two homes, the Beaver's also own land here. The property line approximately goes beside this structure. They have another glint on the other side of the structure, but that forms the line with the Springs property. So from that vantage point over here, you're looking back into existing woods, part of which will be retained. Some of this area would contain those personal storage buildings I mentioned. And also, it would have some of that type A screen to supplement the measures for that neighborhood as well as properties over the right. One of the things that I did mention, although it will have, and the plan calls for a type A stream, I didn't point this out, but they would like to have access through here, so they'll be able to get, they can get through there. But for the benefit of everybody, there'd be some vegetation here that remains. Some obviously taken out for these improvements, but at least a continuous green edge road, six foot tall, here to supplement once a year or contain this orphanage, that's what I suppose. Alright, a few points from the landings plan, it may or may not be beneficial to the board, but we're located in area three, is the site approximately here. It's outside both of the 85 and 152 corridor overlays. There's no specific recommendations for events in the landings plan. I did include this about home-based businesses. This is not a home-based business and as the board was aware, with the fact this property's owned already, with drives public right, it's 35 feet of fringe. There's a lot of things that the spring standard could do as a home occupation. Being that they live on the site, I felt like this might be something the board would want to consider. It has some recommendations that talk about the structure of the inside of the original building. I mean, lights that focus downward, not up light. And a visual separation either from distance or streaming and also limited square footage. That's somewhat been addressed in the ordinance with that change in me last year.
I know that this is a broad open-ended question, but the home-based businesses that they would qualify for, give us some examples.
They could have Carolina Sidewalks on the property if they owned it. I mean, that kind of contractor, they could have some light manufacturing. About any retail use other than to like a bar or adult entertainment, but any retail. They could have majority service sector uses. I mentioned the day camp or the summer camp for kids earlier. That's a conditional use too, so the event center covers both. But the instructional aspect, just if the Springs wanted to teach people, how do you operate events? They could do that all right.
So to get you to repeat that then, under this zoning, they could operate any of those businesses and would they, they wouldn't even come forward?
Yes, that's fair. So the public notice, on tenant, we post assignment property, as typical. Next to here, these are the folks that received letters that were within 100 feet of the property. I think this one was barely, we didn't include it. And it's only agreed to nine letters. But at any rate, it offers the folks that are our coordinates for the receiving notice that exceeds the jurisdiction, it says a joint grant. For 22 years, this is what we've done. And I obviously personally won a phone call, and it sounded like the individual may have been speaking on behalf of some of the folks who are interested in clearing that, they got the message, close there here. But, so our typical procedural things. You will have some example files. They're not staff recommendations on what to do, it's just a few, choose to approve the request. Here's some things to consider and what they may look like in a request. For the benefit of Commission of Enclosure and peers, I did include those here. But if they need reference back to that, which is what they do not have, and that would be passed out here by the clerk, we could reference that back for their benefit. So there'd be several different motions. One would consider the six criteria. We have three findings of fact to make. And then there'd be a motion for the conditional use permit with any conditions for consideration. Some of which may be the wheel stops we talked about, could be hours, it could be additional streaming, whatever else. But one other thing I want to mention too, this is not a public here, like a typical, like we've heard previously. It does not have a, there's no 24-hour notes for additional meetings. This would be final vote unless the board takes it or extends it in some fashion. And if I didn't mention it, the intensity allocation would be deferred to. And any questions?
Go back to your, your, no. Six separate motions provided, is this page there? Any of the add a presentation access?
It will be the checklist. You do not have to do six separate motions. We throw that in there based on, depending if there's any concern and starts to give a debate. But it depends on the deliberation. If you feel like there should be separate motions, then each one would have to pass, or to move forward.
Okay, any questions? Appreciate you for checking.
Yes, Shane, I have a question about the whole issue of pervious versus non-pervious and the percentage. And I understand, do I understand correctly that this current plan meets that criteria?
The current development of just the residence is fine because it exceeds the limit. The proposal would have 20% in purview scope and therefore requires the permit because it exceeds the 12% administrative.
Okay, and then they have future plans to put buildings between the screen and their property line?
So that's a good question, I'm glad you brought that up. The approval, we refer to typically as the 10-70 provision. You can take out 10% of watershed. The other part of that is the 7% covers this facility. If the board approves the allocation for anything over 12%, they're automatically allowed 7%. But since this is site-specific, you wouldn't see another large event center here built without the board's approval. I'm mentioning these because residential is largely prohibited function site. So the board doesn't necessarily need to see that unless there's a concern at this stage and what that could look like on those structures.
Okay, so this is in a watershed. Is this like a priority watershed? Is it a delicate watershed? What's going on with the watershed?
It's one of several we have in the county, and watershed two is the most restrictive that we have with a couple of exceptions, but again, it's a pretty common thing. If you're anywhere south of 152, you're probably in at least streeting the river back west and all up to 801. And it's a large territory in county of watershed.
You know, as we build more and more around the county and we get more and more non-pervious surfaces, it increases the runoff and I think that's something that our county is really going to need to look at. All you have to do is look at the city of Salisbury and what happens when it rains really hard. You know, they got water back up all over. And I, I really am concerned about, you know, this turning into the site that because it's considered their home, that they can just continue to build. Do I have that right or Shane or my?
It's interesting because the, if you have, if the Springs lot was 40,000 square feet, which is very, in terms of residential, if we're just speaking of residential, there's no watershed requirement, they can cover the entire site of ground. Structure is obviously then to buy this on the ordinance, but there's no review, but once it goes into the commercial phase, it's based on this percentage here. And I think, you know, one of the things is probably at some point, of course, the watershed we've approved in most allocations for is, I believe it's the Colored Creek. It's one of all of the best reports and most of our stuff. Of course, it's fairly large watershed, but we approved 1% of our 10. So at some point, we'll run out. That's a, that's a whole other question of do we want to contribute those two? And at this point, there's not really been since '94 a directive of who gets its first come, first served. You know, reserved for semi-public uses, churches, schools, fire departments, or what. But once this exhausted, then they're going to need onsite stormwater. And maybe just detain that stormwater rather than, and typically it's 50%. The board made a call when we looked at the old Bayford Road area and that watershed, that would probably be even that quick because this is fairly small compared to other watersheds we have. And that was looked at, but none of the others were included. It was going to be the same approach with first come, first served.
Hey Judy, you raised a good question. Page one, from, bottom of page one, it says, there's a possible 1,013 acres that's available to be taken out. I'm reading that from Shane. But that, all the activity that we've done and all commissioners prioritize, I'm reading this right, only 21 acres of 1,013, which is only 2% has been taken out. So you're right, you're, I think you're right to question the future. For today, all of history up until today, we've only taken out 2%. So if that, if that helps, if that helps any, I think we do have a future question that you bring up and that's something worth talking about. That isn't, I think we're, at least till Friday, will be good, so if that makes you feel good.
Yeah, well, another question, Shane. Okay, so they put this gravel road in and they put gravel parking lot in. Is there anything to, to keep them from paving at all?
The board decided that that's not what the plans should entail, but I can't speak for the applicant, but a lot of these event centers, they don't have a hard surface like that. Sometimes there's that draw for a little rural area and. Sometimes there's that draw for a little rural area and not have that, that same appearance. It's not a trap or something like that, but definitely that's a concern of the board. Then they could have that as a condition. One of the things didn't get into, but what it's worth, there's a provision that if you put geotech fabric down, a number 57 stone, make it six inches compacted, then that's not considered impervious by the state in our current development. As odd as that sounds, but and, and maybe that's something of interest to the Springs, but we didn't talk about it because this is a first, again, I, I did recall that I had those numbers in there as the chairman read, 21 acres out of 1,013.
Does the, uh, 125 gas is coming to the spread footage of the building?
That is a number that the applicant came up with, I guess, that they want to accommodate. Kind of a loss in some of those things, but it looked like from some searches of other event centers, it's common that they put like a headcount to different, um, view packages or something they can accommodate and feel like they can arrange and stuff.
So they were, um, I guess they went out there and it was fire marshal so they can have more. Will they still be limited to 125 of those 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 in that picture?
I would defer to the applicant, but I really do feel like it's based on, because they can have, they have to work it. I'll have to go with that. So that's a good question.
Hey, in your evaluation criteria, number four, you used to not generate significant violations. Um, but if they're asked, um, according to your facility insurance, plenty of equipment background music. You know, if we were to approve this, um, what are our remedies in that in terms of being faced?
Well, the first would be, uh, neighbor calls to the sheriff department. They come out and feel like they need to violate that and then have to check that.
All right, any other questions for Shane?
Yeah, go ahead, Craig.
Hey, is this, uh, water, I mean, is this well septic out there?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I saw some, some commercial buildings. I didn't know if they had water to sewer out there.
Shane, it still bothers me that this is considered that it doesn't require a zoning change. Um, it just, if this is a business, I understand that it's on their property, but is this the way that we have done, um, especially use permits for other businesses on people's property? And is it zoned? Uh, isn't it zoned like commercial?
Question correctly. Event centers were something there. I guess we're not enumerated very clearly in the ordinance. I think you could probably be sure there's something in the words called a wedding check. Or excuse me, not in the zoning, our period document is the SIC 30. Uh, there's all kinds of stuff in there that, um, that you could, you could get into. But a, just having a wedding check on your property, you might get those in home occupation. But most of the time, it's always turned into other things. And what is a period or other gathers, hence the term event center that a lot of jurisdictions have looked into. And after I cited in the report, a couple of different rezoning applications were some, I don't think the circumstances and neighbors would be the same, but some of the neighbors at two other locations, they were more concerned with commercial location and where they use, which to me was a little surprising, but with that said, we looked at, let's say, you can do a lot of things in home occupation. I just didn't feel like as a staff that we need to be admitting, receiving a request like that and approving and ensuring it's okay. Even though there's probably a lot of things in home occupation that could surprise the average person or neighbor to do. You know, the later hours and the potential for this thought that this could be in front of the board. And when we made that text amendment change, I believe it was last year, then it provided this platform to reveal individual. And I touched on this too, but this will be our fir- our first one, of course, before this said. But all the other ones at the county and speaking of our jurisdiction and a couple in the ETJ areas, they're all on farms. Except for, I think, one, um, and then one other is, is, is close to being finalized and a big farm is two, they're exempt. So we didn't know how many of these we would receive. Those are left, they're on farms.
Okay, so under the conditional use permit, um, if there's things that, that come up, are we able to call that ba- permit back in and have, have them come in and, um, quote unquote, fix things? Or is it conditional use permit and forever they can do what they want?
If they're on a condition or the terms of the plan, then we could recall. If they want to make changes to it, same thing. If we had heard something and found out that maybe that wasn't the best idea after the fact, then registered papers are not allowed to do much. You have to violate the plan that was originally presented, more conditions than they're given.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, while Shane has this particular slide up on the screen, one of the things that I would like for the board to consider is the screening that is on the Brookwood side. I'd like to see that come all the way across because if we're going to have amplified music, I would like to contain that music within that venue as much as possible.
Along the road.
Yeah, where it says 276 feet, just have it come all the way across to the driveway. And then the same on the, on the other side where, where the event center is, have that screening come all the way to the, to the, at least the back corner. Because there is a church that is, uh, in close proximity to this. And since their request is to be open at nine o'clock on a Sunday, I wouldn't want that music interfering with sanctuary that's, that's trying to have service. I'm, I'm just showing it now since it's on the screen.
What looks like on math on the aerial that they gave is that there's already, um, it's already wooded all the way around the back corner. So you can get there.
I do, but there's also that area there along the road where it's, once they get to the event center there, it's going to be open.
Sure, yeah.
And, and, and I really can't see what that is in the, in the rear corner right next to, uh, where it says 375. I don't know if that's plowed ground or if that's bushes or whatever, but I would want the screening to contain, uh, or be consistent with the height of the screening that they've got coming down that property line.
Yes.
That's just what I would like to have and that's up to the board.
That's it. All right, if there aren't any other questions for Shane, then, uh, if the applicant's here, then, um, love to hear applicant. Shane, do you have the applicant's here? Is she?
Yeah.
Oh, well, hey, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
You didn't know you should have brought dinner, but you did.
I didn't. All right. Um,
Hold on.
I don't know if you have any questions about what we're planning on doing. So I'd rather talk about that a little bit.
And do you go by Seri?
I do.
Okay, will we call you Seri?
Yes.
All right, or would you rather not be Mrs. Springs? All right.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, it's hard to understand, um, when people are talking at the podium. So if they could speak closer into the microphone, hopefully it'll be a little clearer.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, what questions from Mrs. Springs?
Mrs. Springs, um, I'm just going to go back to the whole perv- pervious versus impervious, um, coverage of the property in general. Um, I think with the gravel parking lots and the gravel road, you know, that's a real plus. But I'm concerned about, um, the future plan that you have to put more impervious, um, structures, um, on the property because that will once again raise the, um, the amount of runoff and the property is located in a flood zone. Um, where does the water flow from your property? Which direction does it go and, and how many homes are down below?
Um, the, the water when it rains, it typically flows, um, toward the, um, proper line where the beavers are. And then it's like a little ditch line there for eventually come from, for the ditch and getting out to drain. And we do not have any plans on doing anything else other than that, that, um, this is approved.
Okay, um, have you ever had any flooding problems on your property?
None. To be part of my house.
How about your neighbors?
Nothing, nothing more.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, any questions?
Uh, so number 125, what is that a number that Joe came up with or?
That is a number that I came up with just from my experience with, um, doing event planning from 2014 to the current. That's not uncomfortable with doing any, even with the current environment for COVID. I've got one hundred and fifty five people in my house, honestly. So I've also decreased my number of events, um, to anywhere from 30 to 50, um, persons until, you know, we get a hold of what's going on with the COVID. But I do not plan to exceed that number because I know that's enough that I can manage.
Wonder, so it said, uh, someone about veteran events.
Yes, well, I'm a guy veteran, um, and for me, I think it's important to have a safe for veterans to come to the state. So, um, when we originally bought Cropping, that's kind of what I had in mind at this program acquisition. It's provide a safe place for veterans and our families to come, uh, for picnics or family reunions or small celebrations of sorts, um, but mainly just a safe environment for veterans and the local community and anyone else that might want to have something that's small and intimate.
So you're doing events now just here for the places?
Yes, I've been doing events since 2014.
What, what are they, just, I'm sorry, I was supposed to take her in, uh, just, or is it the event?
I'm sorry, I hear you.
Or is it the normal event situation?
Um, go all over. If someone wants to do a wedding, I will go wherever they book. If someone wants to do a, a party, so they, anything like that, um, they're those who could reach out to me. Uh, and then I'll go and do the event, set up event for them. Um, I also work with other event planners if they need help setting, setting up, um, more venue or weddings or any event, uh, so it's just, you know, like.
So do you think, or you still be doing events on the places or are you trying to do everything here?
No, um, my, uh, plan is, I mean, I'm getting a little older. So, and there's a lot of traveling that they're doing currently and, um, I would like to kind of be at home, uh, and have more control over, you know, um, just the future of, you know, if this is something I want to do when I actually retire, um, for my second job. So I thought it'd be good to have a home-based business, um, in particular because, um, I have my mom that lives with me and my sister, my mom's elderly, my sister's disabled. So I need to kind of be at home for work. Um, so that is another reason why I felt like that might be a good idea. Just to have it at home because I can be at home with them and also, um, you know, learn the business that the event center.
You have an AUC permit. You being allowed to serve alcohol, but?
I am not smoking alcohol, sir. There's no smoking at all.
All right, any other questions for the applicant?
All gems. Um, so you stuff it as part of your business, your model's like the alcohol metric. You don't, like the way that you get that alcohol is.
No.
Because, um, maybe that's not what, because you don't do that or there's permits. If she get out the permits or, you know, the later, the one that she's self-employed, they only do, letting alcohol and the, uh, they got the permits out, out there.
Sure. The way those permits work, they don't have to be a venue. It can be, it can be, um, the, 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 or close to the party, it can be a permit. Though they were to, uh, to just rent out, then they would take care of the event. Just rent the space and then they can get permits. They could, but that's, she says the rules you want to do, but, you know, hypothetically.
Thank you very much. We may hand you back.
Okay.
Tonight, I don't know that tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. A- anything from your, uh, significant other? Anything you, okay. All right, well, um, at this point, we'll open the floor to anyone that wants to speak on this. We don't have a time limit on this specific one. So come over, state your name and address and welcome. Glad you're here.
Thank you very much. My name is Anna White. Good evening.
What, what's your last name?
Anna White.
Okay.
And I live at the day end of Brookwood Drive. So Brookwood Drive is about a mile long from the beach. And there's a large property actually past Spring's location. Um, and really I just want to talk about the demographics, et cetera, there. I'm a lifelong resident of this entire community. I grew up there. And my family owns a good property there. My parents are still there, my brothers. And we hope that I'm a decent, will be able to deal with that area. So building values are very important to us. Um, professionally, I hold an active North Carolina real estate broker in charge license for state North Carolina. And with that, I feel qualified to go or come in and talk about concerns that we've got from a personal, from a property perspective. I'd like to start off first and say that the Springs are a very nice couple. We invited them into our home. We helped them with building that they were thinking about wrecking or garage. Loving, very nice people. So this is not personal in any way, shape or form. This has everything to do with the potential impact to the community. This has everything to do with the potential impact to the entire community. I just want to talk also again about the demographic of the neighborhood. There's about forty-five to fifty homes within the B4 Loop way down in Brookwood Drive area. B4 Loop has two exits onto one fifty-two. Whereas this road is Brookwood Drive that comes off of B4 Loop and it's a dead end. One way in, one way out that goes past the president. So it's not anywhere I could ever turn around. They all end up at my house, basically, at the end of the road. There are no turnarounds. And everything there is private property. I would say that there's about eighty-five to a hundred people in the neighborhood in total. This is the first neighborhood. We have African Americans, Latina and Caucasian families ranging in age from eighty-six years old to three years old. There are at least twenty-five individuals over the age of sixty, of which four are disabled. There are many children that get replaced safely in and around the roads and neighborhoods. The income levels are a mix between low and moderate and high. And many of the homes are actually rentals because the neighborhood is peaceful and family friendly. There's really not a lot of rental turnover or even homes are being sold. I'll say that the majority of the owners that went out are two owners of low income rental properties that will at some point have to go away. But at this point, they're providing low income housing. And it's important because a lot of the people that live there can't afford to live anywhere else. So we need to try to support that. It doesn't always increase our property values, but they get cleaned up and they keep it clean in the area and that's important. So I've read through the other proposal that submitted to address each of the items they need to meet and get the approval for this permit. And I'd like to say that the majority of these really can't be proven or monitored in any way. Even the noise would be on the neighbors that try to monitor it. And that's concerning. So we have to cover all. Now, we experienced that wedding at their house in twenty nineteen and it was very loud. Parking was all over the streets. I've been told by DOT that cannot happen again or when we vote, they're going to leave it till you can use the road for that event. So I'm assuming that all this parking will be, you know, taken care of anybody parking in the streets. But I just want to bring up some collective concerns. The owners say the beach will not significantly distract from the character of the surrounding area. To me, the surrounding area parking values will decrease. Because you're adding a building that's almost the size of a Dallas gym. Dallas gym has seven thousand square feet. This is going to be fifty thousand square feet. Dallas gym is not going to even generate a hundred twenty-five people coming in most of the day. But you're going to have a hundred twenty-five people at every event that are coming in and out. Now, they may choose to drive together, but they could literally be a hundred twenty-five cars if they all were separate. And that doesn't really include all of the vans and the vendors and servers, caterers, cleaning. It doesn't include any of that. So there's just a lot of traffic coming in and out. And I have evidence of the fact that with, not that Sarah would give you to talk about the fact that venues, wedding venues or venues being placed in property resident areas and that the, for different reasons, the property values decrease. The noise, curfew, traffic. The property values decrease, rental values increase. People want to have peace and quiet and be able to enjoy a safe neighborhood. Okay. Added transportation access to site exists for the owners when they don't describe a care for emergency vehicle access to their site. But what about the neighbors that may need emergency services? And there's a lot of interest coming in or out and the piece of ability of emergency assistance. It puts our address and address at risk. Hazardous safety conditions will not result according to the owners. They make a lot of commitment regarding how to control potential safety issues that may happen on the site with an event. However, I did not know we had this case being talked about tonight. We recently had a shooting, which is also close to us and happened at this Halloween event that was talked about tonight. And I brought that article and had no idea that it's going to happen. But there's no, you know, there's, what's going to happen to stop anybody coming into the event? This is not like it's their family necessarily. This is a for-profit event. Therefore, they're running to whoever. There'll be no screening that I read about. There'll be nothing that says that they even know who's coming in or even working in there. In their, you know, for what's said, their safety is. Is there a security line other than somebody being outside? There's a lot of children in the area. We don't want pedophiles. We don't want criminals coming into our neighborhood and then coming back. We just, I mean, we would like to prevent that. So is there something that will help us as a neighborhood? The useful amount generates significant noise, odor, dirt or dust. Based on the site layout, the majority of the property is going to be record times or record. I would expect a lot of dust from that. The others ask how noise would be restricted and cared for inside the building, but what about noise outside the building? People shouting, motors revving, cawing, horns blowing. How many neighbors ensure all noise is cared for and kept to a minimum? How is it going to be monitored? What about lights from cars? There's a house directly in front, and we saw a picture of that earlier, of a family that lives there. And every person that goes out of that van at night is going to have a lot of headlights shining right into that house. Coming off, you know, so they're going to be in a lot of impact with lights at night. Let's see. Excessive traffic and parking problems will not result. I can see how they can care for parking once the cars are on the site, but that does not care for excessive traffic. If the crowd's only two to a hundred twenty-five people, just like I said a while ago, it doesn't include the vans and vendor security staff. There's not a limit to the frequency of the events that could be held, the number of times a day. And it sounds like it could be weekends, it could be late in the day. This significantly increases the traffic. When the neighborhood expects to go home, rest, relax and enjoy comfort of their home and their property. And they should be able to do that. This is private property. We should be able to handle that right. Many of these people have worked all their entire lives to own new properties and to enjoy their property and this threatens it. That was indicated that a lot of stores now the home they're gassed with that does not mean that those who are in the venue cannot have their own alcohol, get their own permits. And our attendees can shovel, intoxicated and drink alcohol wrong in their vehicles. How's this going to be cared for? Other considerations, sewer and water requirements, generally a building decides to have sprinklers in the event of a fire. I don't know where this water is being supplied from. I didn't see anything about bathroom or contractions for this event. This thing will generate some type of odor. And then the first topic I'll go about the fact that this is totally wide open to Brookwood Drive once you come down the road. This is not going to be a pleasing kind of site to look over and see coming and going to property. To those of us that live in the area. If this is approved and upon receipt, anything that probably allows or run the land that passes the next time to do with whatever they choose. And then accounting will restrict or store before noises. So we don't know what opens the next time or two. And finally, let's say every person that's lives in the surrounding area is paying for the right to enjoy the use of their private property and peace and quiet. That constant interactions of crowds turning going at all times of the day and night, especially when they're primarily at home in the states, nights and weekends. Should all eighty-five to a hundred people that live in the community have their way of life diminished for the good one? Who are at the end of the day seeking to make a profit off of their property despite the impact it will bring to the entire group? The desires of one should never come to the sacrifice of many. Most if not all the owners' responses to zoning ordinance stated concerns regarding their impact to them and their proposed facility. However, you're talking about providing additional zoning in a residential neighborhood should not be impact to the entire neighborhood. Be a paramount consideration first and foremost. Do not feel these responses satisfy the impact to the neighborhood. I do not feel zoning ordinance should be approved. I've included several articles citing actual experiences and information that come from the venues being within residential neighborhoods. And all of them point to decreased home and rental values, increased in noise impacts to area lifestyles, specifically horses. And there are three large horse farms nearby this property that will hear this noise and these disciples of music or whatever. It decreases the ability to enjoy our homes and the privacy of it. It increases traffic of unwanted people in our neighborhood. Both confirmed with the actual shooting that took place in here recently. There are homes recently. And I attached that article. Increased trash on the roads, lights, noise from vehicles. I'll say that I'm a risk manager by trade with bank and we're a large bank. And if I were to report a risk analysis on this proposal considering all factors, I would conclude the risk is not worth the reward. As the impact of the majority is too great and cannot be adequately mitigated. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Is, uh, is there anyone else? Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to hear.
My name is Ken Moose.
What's your name?
Ken Moose.
Moose, okay.
I live at fifteen ninety-five Brookwood Drive. I'm here talking about the land. You tell about send others out. This is Jason Proffits. I'm one of the bigger owners of the whole room. I own a lot of land now. And I had bought this land in the past few years for cumulative land for my kids to build on. So they have a secure and safe place to live. And this event's going to give in dangers, but it's going to have a lot of traffic, a lot of picking. And when you bring pickling to the neighborhood, you bring crime. That's how it works. But my, my issue is y'all was up here talking a lot of good about groundless, water runoffs and, and site works was brought up. Let me tell you some history about this community, community that I lived here all my life. Fifty, I'm fifty-five years old. I swear I was born and raised, that's right here. And like I said, daddy lives there and I got a lot of land there and my daughter's going to build a house there. Looks, I don't know about now. But the water, the water that he was talking about running off, it comes through my property. It's washing my driveway. That's what's happening in that water. It's eating and roding. The creek that comes through, I own most of it from that land down the road I own. So that's where water actually comes.
Way back when. Where, where, where do you live in relation to the apartment?
I live on the end of Brookwood Drive.
On the same side of the road as they do?
Uh, I live on the opposite side, where the water moves.
So does the water cross the road and come to your land?
It comes underneath the road and comes down the creek.
Is that?
But it comes across the road all the time too. I just kept calling your question. They had to replace a cop probably about five years ago because of water.
So, so I have a question for you, whether they even live there or not, would that have them? What, what is them living there currently, forget this current plan we're talking about? Just the fact that they have a home, is that, is that?
Well, you're going to create more watershed, so you're going to create more water runoff from that site. Anytime you put roofs in the air and put watershed in, you got flood issues. As it floods on anyway.
It's, it's, I'm going to, it's uncorrect that. It's not a flood zone, it's in a watershed. So that just deals with water quality issues and surface runoff. It's not in a flood zone.
That's right.
Well, the road itself used to be great. Okay, they put the road in years ago. And this is the reason the county changed rules. This is the reason they put rules in place. Because they come in, they have all these gravel roads in county. They had all these people living on it and they made all these developments, all these people living off these gravel roads. County come up and said, okay, we're going to make payment roads, but we're going to put guys, we're going to put rules in place where you just can't put gravel roads in. You got to put in a state maintained roof and make it develop. They did that for a reason. This road right here was grandfathered in, so they come in and did roads. Site works. It was broad. Up there, they're talking about the joint is their property. Well, that was grandfathered in commercially too. It used to be a fancy street. That's before they had rules in place for the businesses. That thing was put there before, they had any kind of guidance, any kind of rules in the county. And then they come up and grandfathered in and they made rules where they just can't build houses, build businesses in residence. And that's the reason why this thing's sitting there. It wasn't for that, it wasn't even just sitting there. That happened years ago. That's the Houston behind it. So the county comes up, so you know, we got residential homes, we need to protect. And this is part of it. And you want to come in and revolve the place for a resident right there, right there middle in the residential neighborhood where you got kids running around and all that activities. I mean, it's, it's close quarters. Road's not that big. It's not, it's not big enough to handle the traffic that sits and takes place in. But I want to give you some history and I feel like the county has did this good service to the people to protect them in the future when they put in guys to keep from this happening. And this, somebody, and he was up here talking about this, talking about my reason, that's commercial business. So you got to resolve. It's not, it's not a commercial network. You know, I don't understand the clarity. I don't understand where it's coming from. So you put in a business and it's a commercial business, but you're not going to have a, you're not going to resolve. You know, but I feel like the county is just right to us to put in rules and laws to protect us. Because I can't buy all the land in the county. That's what somebody told me. Well, you can buy it. I said, I can buy it, son. That's the reason I pay taxes. That's the reason I vote for missionaries or whoever. I got one vote. Hopefully you serve us correctly. And that's how, that's, that's what we got going on. Okay?
Thank you for your time. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thanks for having me. Uh, my name is David Chu. I live at one nine Aviary Loop Road. Uh, I have three kids that play, you know, in my yard. They play on that road. Um, that's very concerning that high traffic is going to be going through there. I know I'm new to the neighborhood. I've only been there about a year and a half. And everybody's welcome being, uh, so far. I didn't even know anything about this until the, the neighbors woke up and said that, you know, they're going to build an event site. And I, I know like my boss man helped build an event site for the Rural Indian Club. But you know, that's out in Boones. That's away from any residential area that has children and, you know, elderly. So, you know, I feel like this is not a good idea for our community at all. Again, with the alcohol, the loud music, um, I mean, we drink alcohol. And we have grill outs and cookouts for the family and there's music, but we invite a lot of all eleven o'clock, it's got to go. So I, I know you might put a rule in place, but if there's nobody there to monitor, it's going to happen. You know, there's no way around it. People are going to drink or do whatever they want. If given a place to do it. And I, I just feel about what's going to happen here. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Good to see you. You got a good boss man, brother.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Yes, welcome. We're in the breaks, uh, in the morning.
Yeah, uh, my name's Matt Baker. I live at ten thirty-five Brookwood Drive.
Hey, would you spell your last name?
Baker, B A D E R. My main concern is the whole thing is, is my family and my kids. And like David said, you know, we're neighbors and our kids play together. They play next to the road, they play it out. You know, if somebody comes to this. You know, if somebody comes to this event and anybody in this room has ever been to a wedding, you know that even if it starts out, we're probably going to be alcoholing cops. And who's going to protect me or my family from walking on the road just like I'm the other drunk? Who's going to protect my kids if they swear come in my yard, hit one of my kids? You know, who's going to protect me? Anybody walking on the road. It's, it's, there's all kinds of cameras that walk on this road every day. There's kids riding their bicycle there from, you know, all times, all hours. But, you know, it's not as disrespectful to them like, you know, man, I'm saying, you know, I have nothing against these folks. It's just, I have to look out for my family and I, that's my main concern is my family. You know, and other concerns like Dan said, you know, what about my property value? If this place goes meaning and I don't want to sell my property in a few years or something. And somebody comes looking at my property, they see this place, are they still going to buy my house because there will be noise in it all the time? They don't want to get that. Well, get some other stuff. We have a lot of older couples live up there. They, I don't believe they want to listen to this. Excuse me, this noise. But in retrospect of everything, I really do not feel that this is a safe option for our neighborhood. It's quiet right now. We have very little traffic on this road. That's why, you know, we like to walk on this road. We like to be out here because it's quiet. When we have a good time out here. I just feel that we have a bunch of traffic in here, a hundred twenty-five people, so to speak. And rip ride, and it just gets people coming in this community crying. We can't listen. Who's willing to listen? You know? Eventually somebody's going to come in and there's going to be problems eventually. It might not be at first, but eventually we're going to have wrong people coming against us, but we don't know who will be here. You know, they can scream and be like, is, is there going to be a pedophile in this bunch of town? Is there going to be a, you know, uh, you know, somebody's had a federal ground beef and you can't listen just by having somebody come in and book the voice. And I, that's my concerns. And I don't prove myself that I, you know, uh, this place is meaningful. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone else? Is there a neighbor off in the back? Then there's no others and, uh, we'll just discuss it among commissioners if there's.
I respond to this. I respond to some.
Yeah, yeah, sure. We, I think we may have some more questions for you.
Just want to respond to my neighbors. Um, I appreciate what you're saying. Um, I have four kids too. I live on the property. I'm certainly not trying to have, um, that type of environment myself. Okay? So, um, I want to just kind of take our, kind of tell you a little bit more about the vision. Okay? The event center primarily, the events that's, that's going to be hosted, is going to be hosted and planned and controlled. For example, um, the eighty percent of the events that I intend to have is your daughter. For example, um, for Easter is the Easter conference for kids growing up. Um, for example, it might be something for a Wednesday seminar. It might be something, uh, for a happy day. It could be a Christmas, um, celebration. Uh, so the events, I think the average venue of what they're used to is not the type of venues that I want to have. Because I do fly a piece of my home. Okay? So, and I know that they're thinking about dividing the traffic that's going to be on the road. Uh, and I don't, I really don't feel like it's going to be a hundred twenty-five cars on the road coming over from my house. Plus, I do go there too. So the plan that I have is, um, five events per month. Okay? To be more specific. Two of those will be dedicated to, um, weddings. Okay? The five events, the other events that I have is again, pre-planned. Okay? So for example, maybe in December or maybe in, um, and I shouldn't have brought my list, I apologize, I didn't bring my list. Um, but in total, it's about sixty events a year. And probably about forty of those events are pre-planned with people that I, that's going to be purchasing tickets or you're letting me know where to come. Okay? It's going to be capped off, uh, in range of thirty people to fifty people. Okay? So it's not a situation where anyone that calls me can come and just do a wedding there. Because again, it's my home. Um, so I do appreciate, um, the concern. Uh, and I understand that concern and it isn't quite made clear. And I don't want to, of course, upset neighbors, a buy house there for their same reason. Um, but I do feel like it's important that, uh, the kids do have somewhere to come. You know, they do play in the roads, um, because a lot of things, a lot of community problems they did not know first and to kind of get them off in the process they like. You know, because there's a lot of uses that we could really utilize that building for. You know? Um, that can be safe and plenty for kids and elderly people and like I said, for retirees and so forth. So it's not, um, an, uh, event center for, um, just for weddings. Okay? So I just want to make it clear to the board that, uh, for me, it's not about the money. Um, for me, it's about having a safe environment for people to come to. Um, like I said, I'm prior military in the last ten years. I was a police officer. So I understand the control, I understand what it takes to, um, have a safe event. Um, so that's all that matters.
I, I have a question for you. According to the presentation that we received planning board, said the road provides access to twenty-eight residents, residences and a church beyond your driveway. What is, what is the church?
Say the name.
Is there a church that is beyond your driveway?
It's the church that's the damn mother to the name of the world.
What's the name of that church?
I don't know.
Anyone know?
Very good.
Yeah.
Name is in the road, is that more?
What, what'd you say?
It's not in any of the road.
It's not all of what means?
No.
But it's, it's not, it's faster.
It's faster than, than all of that.
So.
It's a very small church. I mean, it's only joining.
Yes. Any more questions? Okay. Thank you. All right, uh, well, let's, uh, commissioners, let's have discussion.
This is a whole, did we ask?
Yeah, uh, April, is there anyone on Zoom? No, she's shaking her head no.
Um, I want a point of clarification before we go into discussions. Um, Shane, on the site map at the bottom where it says parking lots and roadway with gravel, impervious coverage. And then it says property is located in a flood zone per panel number five, six, four, six. So this property is in a flood zone.
It's not a flood zone, but every flood map, at least in our county, is in a zone. X means you're not in a twenty percent chance flood zone. Anything, I guess theoretically that could flood to a certain degree. Noah came back and there's a flood, then probably X zone will get flooded too. But with that said, this is not a flood zone. Water shit often, I think you brought that point earlier, different, totally different subject. Um, but sometimes they can be confusing to, to folks.
Okay.
Um.
They're, they're for flood insurance rating purposes. To tell you how much water might be created in that particular area in over an average of thirty years or something like that. That's why it's so confusing, actually.
Mr. Chairman, another, um, I have a couple of concerns. Um, the zoning of the property, number one. Um, you know, if we're going to going to, uh, zone this to me correctly, I think it should be a commercial business, um, zoning as the surrounding, um, surrounding businesses are. Uh, there's a business, commercial business that backs right up to, uh, Ms. Springs' property. Um, so I really question the, the, uh, zoning. Um, and then it was also noted in the report that.
Judy, uh, can we, we address that? That's a good question.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's a good question. You bring up so good. Shane, uh, maybe elaborate on that, um, the, the business behind. Is that, is that done virtually or is that, um, was that done through a condition use permit or?
I think it started out, it was a non-performing use, had some, um, arrangement of structures. It seemed like Jerusalem Baptist Church made a home of the property and they tried to sell. And in two thousand and six, the commissioners approved the CDICD to accommodate the use. But, you know, it's fair point that there, there were structures very creative zones. So it was a reaction to that, um, transaction.
That helps you. So.
Um, yeah. Yeah. Um, Shane, are you familiar at all with the, the, um, comment that the gentleman had about the creek running underneath the road through a culvert that washed out? Is that something that there's any record about or how often it happens?
It's something that gets detailed, we'll have to address, but when you look at the contours of that area then, maybe in the, in the bigger picture, but water's going to run obviously downhill, downhill is across the road. And so unfortunately, those landowners receive water from, uh, their surface water runoff with dirt started over, then they're going to have, there's an erosion plan is required, but still you're going to see, you know, muddy colored water that runs offsite and goes to those areas. So the more development that you get, then obviously increases. I don't know that much from that, but it, you know, in terms of the, the overall area, it's hard to say with what the experience I've been through, whether it'll happen again or not. I mean, ratings are always tricky because they, they vary the impacts.
Yeah. Um, you know, when water gets increased and starts to run faster, um, one of my concerns is that it does affect the property owners down, downstream. And, um, you know, that, that's actually something I would, information I would like to have before we actually vote on this.
What specific measures do you speak on?
Um, just some basic watershed issues and the comment about the water, the creek that runs underneath the road through the culvert which has washed out. Um, you know, I, this whole, this whole permit is about, about saying that we're going to allow more runoff than what the property is allowed. Is that correct?
Intensity allocation exceeds twelve percent. So to that, yes, that is correct. Unless they chose that fabric in fifty-seven style I mentioned, then it looks the same, they function arguably similar, but is not considered built upon air. So splitting hairs, I don't know what the eight percent, if that would provide enough for them, but you know, there's no way that you can say a building is not a purpose, but you could probably do the, the ground.
Yeah. Um, I believe Ms. Springs talked about this being a retirement business. And I'm just wondering if, um, when she does retire and go into the business full-time, whether, you know, how much more traffic, um, and intensive use of the property that will happen. Just an observation. And the last one is, um, under rural home occupations, event centers are not included. So for me, that's another zoning issue. And with that, I'm done.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, uh, make a few comments, if that's possible.
Yes, sir, please.
I remember the first time that, when you came on the board.
April, can we bring them up?
Do what?
Uh, we're trying to get you up on the screen instead of the presentation.
They don't need to see me, that's fine. Um, the first time we had a zoning issue, I remember a conversation that you made. And that was, we all need to be good neighbors. And I haven't forgotten that over the six years that you and Jim and Judy have been on the board. And to me, what I'm seeing tonight is this is just not a good fit for this neighborhood. I mean, I understand everybody has their property rights and you know me well enough to know that I fight as hard as I can for everybody to do what they need to with their property. But at the same time, it needs to be a good fit. And I'll recall back to when we had a gentleman, I won't call his name, but you know who it is, that bought a tract of land and then proceeded to build him a racetrack right out there next to everybody's house. And the neighbors were piling in, showing videos, showing noise levels and all these things that were violating everything that, that we had put in place in the county. I'm not saying that this young lady's going to do that, but I'm saying that what she's trying to do is, is to bring a commercial business into a residential neighborhood. And I just don't think that's proper. So whatever motions you want to make, if it's to approve, I will not look forward. I'm done.
I'm curious, uh, on the road, um, Berkwood Road. So like, you know, the conversation assumes it's a state making road.
That's correct. It's probably a fifty wide.
So what, how does, I think I recall that road being kind of narrow. But being eighteen foot, that's just, if they were to per road it today, would be wider than eighteen foot.
It's a good question. So with our new road standards, if you build a new major road, it's got to be twenty-five. More about fire code. Eighteen's been sort of the default standard, if you will, for so many years because it's allowed with D O two eleven. And still it's allowed, were it not for our code of six twenty. Um, any new roads are going to be asphalt. I really looked at closely, but the road here, it's some, I don't know if it's hard ground, but it's something that's not the smooth asphalt for what it's worth. but it's something that's not the smooth asphalt for what it's worth. But there's a lot of roads in the counties that can be wide, even three roads. Clearly, this is a dead end road, sorry, one difference later.
I wonder sometimes when we have, I guess on major thoroughfares and reviews and studies that we see sometimes, they'll be on the applicant's, I suppose, or will they do something this small?
The study, I guess the things we try to comp again would be traffic counts, which is not any, there's not a road capacity, which usually if you solve them, they probably scare you because those are the numbers you don't want to see.
Usually, I was looking for that while they were talking about traffic, better than seeing the traffic.
There's nothing related to that, but the interesting thing is, with the house numbers, you can about determine if it's twenty eight homes, you just multiply by ten. That's about the number of trips for per resident. The total number of event centers, there's nothing identified in the IT. So we used the guest total to figure it out as counter, a rough idea of what to expect. So it's not real clear, but we still have those as sort of a topic of the impact, if you will. I don't know if that answered your question, sort of talking around the topic. But with this saying, we really hesitate to give you a number because we're not certain. We don't have a basis of IT, when it says this, you can divide that because there is one. Anything like that in the code book, there's no numbers and figures to go on. Only thing we can say is DRT said that that is something that they would not require permit and met their standards. Of course, sometimes, just like county standards, there are minimum standards. So doesn't mean that that's, you know, you recall back, Reston Dr. Drive and one fifty two with that dollar payment, that minimum standard too.
Wayne and Beaver Road, are they dead anymore?
Beaver's a loop and- Wayne just comes off of Beaver Loop. It's not, it's a private road. I guess they paid it just, I really don't know if they paid it for what. But regardless, it provides access to a handful of houses and business. But when you come off one fifty two, Beaver Loop is just to the left. The name's different, but there's no spots. We continue Beaver Loop on that road.
The issue of zoning has come up a couple of times. I know Judy's brought it up, they've been good questions. We're reading from staff comments. Says to planning staff's recollection, two applications under residency for event center or wedding venue type uses. Since county zoning was established in nineteen ninety eight, two thousand and eight on North County Eight oh one, and two thousand and sixteen on seventy seven hundred block of Stokes Ferry Road, both of which were processed with associated conditional rezoning application. I think you referred to this, each was received with a degree of concern based on the associated commercial zoning designation. And you said not necessarily because of the use, but because they were being rezoned commercial.
That's a hard question, yes.
And so the planning work here, they answered the request. Within the last decade, the number of inquiries has increased considerably, prompting creation of current event center standards and review through a conditional use permit. So to get to Judy's question, again, which, help me clarify this one again. Do we have a zoning spot for event center slash wedding venues? Or do we handle event center slash wedding venues through the conditional use process only?
I just thought we'd read first, we'll be in our district. So this was another avenue that they could take. For the two that you cited there, you can't say that, let's be honest, when neighbors show up and they're concerned with something, they probably don't care so much about, is it conditional use for a reason? They care about what's going in, what it will look like, what it'll function. But for what it's worth, it's still a process where they don't have to have this whole change. Now that cloud, oh, you know, my neighbor's on a commercial, so I'm going to continue that district. We've already made one decision here, so it's easier to make it correct. So if it's non-zoned commercial, then that leaves design away and some of those concerns play.
Okay, so to restate what you said, so again, the concerns were, if we make this project, if we zone it commercial, that may open the door for further commercial approvals versus if we just did it as a conditional use permit. It would at least keep that door shut, if not forever, for some time.
And just passing the test of commercials on in the rest of the year.
So, I'm going to add to you. Did you guys, Judy?
Yeah, on the zoning. I mean, it's not even zoned residential, it is zoned rural agriculture.
All right, so from my, from here, from my perspective, there's one thing I can't get away from. And that is, they have a right to put a whole range of businesses in there and never come before. They have a right, if we put that map back up, the map that we have of the flyover. People are looking at this satellite map. This is the satellite. There you go. If you'll put your cursor over there on the top line. It's hard, the buildings and the other commercial. What do we call that business that's there?
Carolina sideboards.
Carolina sideboards. If I understood you correctly, by right, they can relocate all of those buildings, Carolina sidewalk onto this property.
If you understand, the sideboards live in this place. Yes.
If I heard you right, they could put a whole range of retail businesses and build a retail facility there. Parking and all of that right now, they wouldn't have to come to those two.
Except for the intensity allocation, that is correct.
Or strip clothes or-
Which one did you say?
Not going to do that argument. If I understood it correctly, they already have the right to put light industrial or manufacturing in that space without coming before the game.
There are several options in that category, yes.
Light industrial, light manufacturing. Which, if that was their intent to do, and they had to come before the board for those, we would very likely receive the same response from neighbors saying, well, we don't like the big eighteen wheelers or the dump trucks or the commercial vehicles or the delivery vehicles from Amazon or the retail traffic or the fifty employees that come in three different shifts for light or manufacturing or light industrial. And that's the problem I'm having a hard time getting past. Is that we've got this business that we've left out there as a stepchild that to me is a lot less invasive than the ones that by right, they can build on their property today with, and no one can say anything about it. No, we're done. Let me, just so you understand, we operate by, we're under a legal proceeding right now. And it says, when the board enters into deliberations, to decide the case, no further testimony may be presented. So this is a, this is a legal proceeding, this isn't a conversation. So I'm just not trying to be hard, I'm just saying we're in a different situation than we were in prior. The prior meeting was just public hearing, well, it wasn't even a public hearing. This is quasi judicial hearing, we have legal rules that we have to abide by. So I'm very sorry that we can't have further conversation. So that's the problem I'm having a tough time getting by is if, if this couple decides, if we turn this down and we say that we're not going to let them do this, but this is how they choose to sustain themselves. I don't judge people's profit when we say that they've got a profit motive. Well, they've also got a motive to eat in the pay bills. So their profit motive is their motive and their to fund. If we say to them, we're not going to allow this, which to me is a, this occupancy is much less, seems, can be, can be much less invasive than retail, light industrial, manufacturing, any of these things. So if this is the way that they're going to support their family, then they may say, if we can't do it here, we'll need to find a better spot and that might satisfy you all in short. But when they sell their property to buy somewhere else so that they can live their dream and support their family, then whoever comes here next, you won't have a say in. Because they do have the opportunity, this business that's up here in corner, would have all rights to buy their property and expand their business and come right off of Brookwood Road and there's nothing any of us can say or do. And so I understand our commissioners' issues of zoning. I understand we're here to talk about an SNIA request. We haven't done this all the time, but this, again, we're only in two percent of our capacity there. We've been doing this since creation. So we're only two percent out of the five here. I think there, I would not approve this and approve it as it stands. I would have some conditions that I would request. Commissioner Pierce earlier said that one request would be to extend, Shane, what?
Screening. Screening.
Yeah, screening, just left ahead. I would, I would ask that we extend screening from the vegetation that's already there on Brookwood Clear over to your driveway. That would be one issue. I would also, in order to provide screening, further screening, I would, I would require screening, I don't know, is there a north, south, east and west on this? But on the right side of the driveway, all the way up the right side of the driveway. So that if you're coming from the dead end of Brookwood and you're traveling up Brookwood, all you would see is, you wouldn't see the parking, you wouldn't see the facility, you wouldn't see the gazebo, you wouldn't see it. That would also help with some sound issues. Now, to me, the biggest issue, you know, I won't talk about the church again. I understand it's a small church and that there's only, I think someone said twenty five or thirty members. But what happens if revival breaks out on Brookwood Drive? And that church gets a pastor in there and they, they have a lot of folks coming in. What if that church begins to build up? What do we say then? Do we, do we tell them they can only grow so much? There's already a church. So I may, I may be on the outside of this decision. But this, these are the hard decisions that commissioners are facing. And as I look at the faces, I know at least one of them in here that's worked on my car. And all of you all seem like wonderful people. And I understand your concerns, but we are helpless if someone comes in to do any of these other occupancies. There's nothing you can do, nothing that you can do. My main concern about this is the issue of noise. And, you know, I've got three kids, they've all been married only, what is it with kids today? None of them get married in churches anymore, do they? They all want to get married, all. Why is that? So my, my second daughter got married in a church at Thomas Chapel. And my other two wanted to get married somewhere else. My son got married in a barn. And that's just what they do these days. And so this community, for right or wrong, and if we told everyone in here, they'd give a different answer, but this community is beginning, is going to begin to experience pressure. And the pressure is brought by a lot of things. It's by natural growth coming from Charlotte, from Greensboro. And it's going to be from growth that's presented by current events, whether it's COVID or whether it's riots and people wanting to get out of, maybe larger areas and live in a smaller town community. These aren't my words, this is coming out of publications that are talking about smaller areas that are going to experience growth because of issues that begin to happen. So Jim and I will be around forever and Mike and Jim and, or Mike and Greg and Judy, we may not be here for a lot of years when the pressure is really going to come down and some really hard decisions are going to have to be made because two things are going to happen. One, we're going to start running out of land and we're going to start trying to put things in places where this group will have to save them. And the second thing is with people growth, with job growth, with growth in disposable income, will come, along with that will come an abandoned services. And those demands and services, those service providers are going to have to find a place to provide that. We live in a changing economic environment, and people being laid off of companies that they worked for for decades, now having to figure out how they're going to kill what they need and to rely on themselves to provide for their families. And I think we're going to begin to see more of this because people who lose jobs are the ones who create and innovate and become entrepreneurial. And this is something that we're going to see more and more and more, and we're going to have more of these discussions that are going to be uncomfortable. We're going to have to take positions that are sometimes popular and sometimes unpopular. I don't know how this board is going to vote. But I've said it twenty times, and I'll say it again, they already have a right to bring these pretty offensive things. And so this is not a leak for me at all. In fact, I think, given the choices that you have, that this would be one and I would agree. Instead of fifty employees running in and out there, three chefs, delivery trucks, Amazon, manufacturing suppliers, all of that, which they could do. So I'm sorry if I disappoint someone, really, that's totally acceptable.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment?
Yes, Mr. President.
You forget, there's two things on this agenda. True, they have the right to do a home-based business, I agree, but they don't have the right to violate the watershed issue that's on this particular question. Without them being able to violate the watershed issue, they can't do what they want to do as a home-based business. You are correct, there are other businesses that they could operate and come in and do that. But that's not the issue before us. The issue before us is conditional use permit and the watershed variance. So that's why I say, I can't vote positively for this. It's going to be detrimental to the people that live there. And, I mean, you make a good point, but you got to take in consideration both issues on this vote, not just the one.
Thanks, that's a good point. I would point out, there's never been one approved. So we would not be approving this, not because of the SNIA request. We would be not approving this because of the conditional use permit request. It would be convenient, there's no question, lean on it. And it would be convenient for us to to lean on that request as a reason to not approve it, but from the time that I've been on the board, there's never been one to be not approved. And so none of this would be the one that I would disapprove of vote request because of a
Mr. Chairman, I I am torn with this issue as you are. I think Shane told us that we had had eleven events centers that had been built in Rowan County, and none of them had come before the board because they're out in the country and they're away from land that's not in the building. I have two sons. One of them got married in church, and the other one got married in a barn. So you're right. They should be doing things differently. And that's the issue that I have. You know, the simple thing would be for me to sit here and lecture people and tell them that if you wanted to be in a quiet neighborhood, you should have had covenants on your property. But Brookwood is an old area that was built long before a lot of covenants were put around and everything. I just don't think this is conforming with the surrounding areas very. And I know this family is trying to do good things, but they can run out and have plans to rent this. And things always go awry when this happens. So that is a difficult thing that I have. Shane earlier did say that if they only wanted to have a rain chapel, that was already possible and arguable.
Yes, it's identified as such, but probably can't, but I don't think I've seen one yet, and it just has a waiting time, none of it. I mean, pretty typical when I mention eleven event centers. All of our properties put in the grid are against, you know, the gathering and what's up. And there's, I mean, things that happen in rural areas, honestly, we don't know about. One of these is not on a farm, and I don't think we permit it. So when you get down to it, people probably get married, there's a house and a big backyard. We're not going to go out there, so he can't do that. It's the frequency, you know, kind of even early to the chickens on the house, and how many you don't have. Well, so when you got down to it, they're not just waves, there are usually other things that provide the flexibility. Where do you want, you know, a pre-planned event is what the definition kind of takes. It opens up a broad spectrum. But I think you're right, where it is just having a rain. But now, if that goes into, I made a ten thousand square foot building. Probably will have some concerns, so we need to go to the ordinance and make sure the commissioners are clear this is how this is interpreted and ready. We'd be anxious for your question.
Yes, I do. I agree with what the chairman says, and there's a lot of things that could interfere that's probably worse than the way it's taking. But my main concern, kind of down that route, is I just don't know that route. It's out there. I think there's really sixty-five parking lots, I think is the number, but I haven't seen any of them. All good planning, all the parts, people park on that road, I don't know if the cars can get through there, too many of them. If there's vehicles parked there, and they're not supposed to park there, then I think that my main issue is that, of course, the noise issue that you see there from the regular, every time they have I don't really know how to fix that, but that's my issue, is I just don't think they ever do see this, that kind of traffic. All right, Commissioners Craig or Judy, anything else from you all?
No, I'm ready to vote.
No.
Okay, and then so would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to deny the request for the zoning change as well as the watershed issue.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we need to make some statements as a fact. So we need to go through the three questions and get through for these things. We need to make a fact that we're not.
Mr. Chairman, you don't need to read those because I can't be on my computer and see you two to get to questions.
These findings of fact are on page five, is that what you?
I can't be on Zoom and see my computer at the same time. I said, I can't be on Zoom and see my
I'm sorry about Shane, you know.
Most of you can transpose all those in the opposite, that'd be the same way, but we could give it a try. I mean, those are being sampled. If you find that statement, you know, it is not, whatever. But I can't say that each one of those will be that easy, if that makes sense.
All right, now, who needs to?
I'll put the chairman's attorney on the spot, but I don't know if there's a possibility to have findings approved at a later meeting. I'm really not sure if that's a
Be the counsel's decision. I'm not comfortable with rewording these in a way that just doing, let me give you an example. Finding of fact, one is the development of property in accordance with the proposed conditions will not materially endanger public health or safety. The opposite of that would be that it will materially endanger public health or safety. And I'm not comfortable.
I agree, that's not the wording we need.
With Charles, I'm going to use technical terminology. Or do they always get part-time position here? Can you give us some guidance on this?
You can move to approve, you can move to deny. Those two scenarios, we need to make the findings of fact. Not really have the option to take until the next meeting.
Can you come back and find anything? Is there an option for them to draw a request?
There is.
All right, so here's where we find ourselves. This is democracy. So I don't want to say there's winners or losers, but it appears that this request will be denied. And so we can do a couple of things. We can take some time to rewrite some of this now, which I'm frankly not comfortable with. We could just, we could continue this item until our next meeting and have staff come back with some better worded findings of fact. Or you guys seeing how this is going, could give us a drawing request? And we would move on to our next item. It's completely up to you.
They would have an option to request, but anyhow, it's coming tonight.
Yeah, that's right. You may want to speak further to staff. If we just continue it until our next meeting, that would give you an opportunity to speak to Shane and him. So it may be that the best thing we do at this point, commissioners, is just make a motion to continue this until next meeting, and that'll give opportunity for our applicants.
I'll make a motion to table it.
I'll second it. It'll give the applicants opportunity to leave us now. All right, Craig, motion. James, can you say? We have to use the previous motion? Is that the first and second? No, there was, I think there was just a motion. I think it was the second. We have a motion to say, can you per discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? All right, so be nice to your neighbors, everybody. Be kind. That's it for that item, aye. April is. April is. I thought you took
You took that out, yeah.
I put it out of my way, I'm sorry, thank you. Caleb provided for us a litter report. Just go through that with the community real quickly, the Department of Environmental Management. Let's see, Rowan County Staff monitors, two thousand four hundred ninety-eight and a half shoulder miles of roadway. During the third quarter of 2020, the Department of Environmental Management removed thirty-six point six four tons of litter and debris along the Rockland Riverside. First quarter was thirty-two thousand eight hundred pounds, which is sixteen and a half tons. And the second quarter was seventy-eight thousand two hundred fifteen pounds, which was thirty-nine tons. And third quarter is seventy-three thousand two hundred eighty-five pounds, which is thirty-six tons. So we're still dumping stuff, we're throwing it out your window on some Rowan County, it's a little pride in our community. Let's not litter on the roadways. It looks bad, it just looks terrible. Jim, your, yes, sir, your first item. Doing your financial report, this is Jim's welcome. Don't blow it.
That'd be good. It's only ten after ten at night, to me. Whenever it wants, they're here. Amy, can you put the graphs? Thank you very much. So the first graph is the monthly sales tax. As you can see, we did receive the June sales tax. We received that in September. It was roughly two point five million dollars, which is on par with what May was. There's an increase, but I'm sure, I know for COVID, two point five is probably not a bad number. And April, second graph, please. So that shows for the year, for fiscal year 2020, sales tax ran at twenty-eight point five million dollars, which is about two million dollars more than we did last fiscal year. Just keep going through these unless somebody has questions.
Now, remind everyone that these are, we're ending our fiscal year, so that's the end of the fiscal year, so
Yes, sir.
So the general public, they think of today as January one, going into the new year, we think in terms of July one through June one, so this is really finishing out our fiscal year for 2019.
Yes, sir, that is correct. Yep, June thirtieth, 2020. All right, you got third graph, April. So the revenue through September, so now we're in fiscal year 21. Through September, we have fifty-five million dollars in revenue, which is almost point four million more than last year, which is where we think we should be. And of course, at this stage, that does not include any sales tax collected for fiscal year 21. Expenditures through September are at thirty-five point eight million dollars. We're about four million dollars higher than we were last year. Two things are driving that, and a big factor is COVID. So those checks that we rolled in this calendar are considered expenses for us.
Excuse me, Jim, Jim?
I may ask too. You're, I think we want to hear of where you are.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Jim? Okay, so you had the
Annual thing.
I'm sorry. Annual expenditures, are we okay? All right. So through September, we're at thirty-five point eight million, which is about four million more than last year at the same time. And again, the big driver is housing expenses.
Again, for the public, when we saw this, we saw four million more. What in the world? Again, for the public, when we saw this, we saw $4 million more, what in the world? And we asked Leslie before she left and asked Aaron that the issue is the CARES Act, federal government money pouring into the county and the county distributing that to municipalities for their COVID expenses is flowing through us. And that's why it looks like we've spent $4 million.
Yes, sir, that is correct. And then the last slide just shows the property taxes, which would be through August. And we're at $48 million and that's what we think we should be.
Any questions for Jim?
Yeah, Jim, what is the percentage of collection on that $48 million? What percentage of the year are we sitting on?
If you give me one second, I can look that up.
That's fine, take your time. Please don't do that to this man. Not only got big shoes to fill, he's got a big mind to have to fill, so I mean.
You've been a very, some of us will be sleeping.
I've been drinking coffee for the last hour and a half.
We are, through August, at 6.5%. To the big, adding collect together, of course, the utilities, which will be built shortly.
I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Jim, but how does that compare with last year as far as percentage was?
Give me another second on that.
That'd be fine, take your time.
He's sitting home in his own chair. He's playing this one too much.
He's got his jeans.
Yeah.
And he's got a sweater on top.
We were at 60, a little under 65% last year at the same time.
So our collections are a little less than they were this time last year, percentage wise?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just want, just wanted to kind of see how the business model is going, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to item 10, budget amendments, motion to approve budget amendments. All right, Jim, motion for a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, are we really going to close session?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we go into closed session, just.
Hold on, hold on, Jim. Yeah, yes, we need, we need to.
Okay, okay, just to remind everyone to vote.
I did today, voted for you and Greg and Jim.
Are we recording this? That's, that's going on our next campaign video. All right, so I move as a board to enter the quick session in accordance with the general statute. Right, 318, 1185, consider real estate negotiations, we have a motion, I'll second.
Second.
All right. All right, well, we're back, motion to come out of closed session. Motion second, right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.